Okay, welcome everyone. This is a meeting of the Town of Rutland's Zone Board of Appeals, June 29th. My name is Chris Seneca, I'm the Chair. Paul Paulson is the Vice Chair. Jacob Morris, Attorney Jacob Morris is a member. Rick Sarette, Attorney Rick Sarette is on line. And Paul Crane, a member is also on the line. Tamika Murphy is our secretary here, taking all the notes. David Maxon online is the consultant that we've hired. He is online. And the applicant is online as well. Yep, I thought it was. Okay. So first up, on the agenda tonight are the meeting minutes from June 15th, meeting, last meeting. Anybody have any issues or questions?
No, nice job as always.
Yeah, I don't have any issues whatsoever. I think we're right on spot on. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
You got a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Paul. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a vote, all in favor to accept the meeting minutes of June 15th as prepared. Please say aye. Aye. Any nays? Hearing none, that carries unanimous. Next up on the agenda is the continuation of the application for variance and application for special permit of Blue Sky Towers LLC for a cell tower at 12 Phillips Road. We have received just some correspondence, I'll just bring to everyone's attention, some things that have come in via email and whatnot. We got an email, I believe it was yesterday, from Caroline Streeter regarding just some comments that she made from watching whatnot regarding a hardship. This was in regards to some of the comments that the consultant, David Maxon, made regarding how to approve a hardship. Also, she mentioned the church steeple. David Maxon was not part of the discussions, the meeting discussions that we had, but the applicant spoke in deeply with his engineer why the steeple would not work and why it was part of the problem that they're having right now getting the coverage that they're saying they need. So Mr. Maxon was not part of that discussion, but I didn't feel we needed to revisit that last week because we already discussed that in previous meetings. And she made some other comments, whatnot, so that's duly noted. She also sent another email about a town of Auburn Water District, did a cell tower on a tank in Auburn, but again, that's duly noted. I didn't see any relevance in that. We got correspondence also from David Gold regarding a judgment of Paxton's EBA for an AT&amp;T cell tower that was shot down back in 2014, I believe it was. And again, reviewing that, we looked at that, took down the consideration, but a lot of the factors, I felt, were somewhat different. That tower did not provide co-location, and I feel that this one does. That's one of the biggest things, one of the biggest reasons why this tower is, in my opinion, in a good spot. And then we also received correspondence from the attorney Sousa regarding that he has an intention, he has letter of intent from Dish Network to be the second carrier on the tower. So again, just duly noted, those items. Does the board members have any discussion regarding that correspondence?
Not for me.
Did we get additional signatures too, Chris?
Oh yeah, yeah. They had delivered those at the last meeting too. Yes, we had also received, they were handed to us at the last meeting, and then they were emailed to us, I guess, during the week, the signatures of a petition of...
I have some too.
Okay. We also have, we received signatures of, somebody went around collecting signatures about the cell tower. I just want to note regarding the cell tower, that was not done by the town. I don't know what information was spoken when these people requested these signatures. So I just wanted noted that that was not done, that that request was not done by the town. That was done by just citizens of the town, which they're perfectly legal to do. But we don't really know, as a EBA board right here, we don't know what was said to those people as they went and got those signatures at those residences.
I do have a comment about that, whenever you're ready.
Please do right now, because that's pretty much all I have to say there.
Chris?
Hang on, Paul. Jacob wants to say something, okay? Go ahead.
For the record, I guess, I recognize the time and effort that went into obtaining the signatures by probably Ms. Streeter and whoever else was involved in that. The problem that I have with regard to the signatures on the petition is this. I'm certain that if I wasn't involved in this board and someone came to my house, knocked on the door and said, hey, listen Jake, you know, downtown, they're thinking about putting this giant metal cell tower right in the middle of the town, and that doesn't sound like a good idea to me. Will you sign this petition to be against it? I'd sign it in a second. So no problem, that doesn't sound very good to me either. The problem is that all of these people on that petition haven't been to all these meetings.
For over a year.
Yeah. They haven't spent the time and the effort that we've spent to look into this, and they haven't done any due diligence, and they have very little information about this cell tower, how it works, where it's going, what it's going to look like. And if they did, I believe that nine out of 10 of those people would cross their name off the list. So that's, you know, that's my position, I guess, on the signed petition.
Thanks, Jake.
Paul, did you have something to say?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah, two things. One, I did share with the board that I went through, and it looked like about significantly less than half of the signatures submitted were from people who would live in the affected area of the cell tower, meaning improved coverage, sight lines, et cetera. So half the people, more than half the people that were signed, that for example, you know, Charlie Kilroy way outside of where, that they would have any positive or negative impact by the cell tower. That's first. And second thing, there were several correspondences sent to the towers, mentioned that this board should get an RFP. This board should look into doing it on the water towers, relocating that. I want to make it clear to people that that's not what this board does. This board does not go looking for RFPs. That's something the Select Board, the Planning Board would do, not us. Has nothing to do with our board. We have a variance in front of us, asking for variances, and then a site plan approval once that is or is not accepted. But so, the whole concept of go put it on water towers is not, is outside of what this board would do. And it just really doesn't apply here. If that's what people want, they should go to the Select Board, should go to the Planning Board and ask those elected officials to put together an RFP to have, you know, the town possibly have money generated from a cell tower from some carrier or group of carriers on a water tower. But again, that's got nothing to do with this board or what, really what's in front of us here today.
Okay, thank you. And regarding the water tower, I know that that's come up as an issue. The applicant in his 13 some odd locations, the other locations they had, they had 20 Glenwood Road, the hill on 20 Glenwood Road, as a location that they had rejected. And that was worth putting 140-foot tower at that location. Now, the water tanks approximately 60 to 80 feet tall when I went by there. If you put a tower on that, it's going to be no taller than 140-foot tower at 20 Glenwood Road. And that location of 20 Glenwood Road is going to cause to have multiple other towers on the other side of town. So in my opinion, you know, we're trying to prevent having 10 towers all around this town. We're trying to, you know, if there needs for a new tower, we're trying to make sure we co-locate this tower where it's an area where it's going to cover the whole town and multiple carriers can get on this tower. That, to me, is what's the best thing for this town in regards to not having a tower at every street corner all around. There is a tower already up at the center of town for the fire department, and that's there. And that's certainly going to be more visible than this tower would be, especially with the reduced height of the 120 feet that the applicants talked about. So with that being said, any other comments regarding correspondence?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Attorney Sousa, just want to get into some of the site issues that I had sent off, that memo to you earlier this week regarding correspondence to kind of segue into this. And you got back a response from your civil engineer today, and I received that late this afternoon. So do you want to, we can just run through these real quick? I think most of this stuff is mitigated. Maybe a few things you just want to discuss with the board, and we can hash that out. Sound good?
That does, Mr. Chairman. And in fact, Tom Johnson from Potera has also joined us tonight so that he can respond to those same questions. He's the one who provided the responses that I sent to you.
Yep.
In response to your questions. So Tom is on tonight.
All right, terrific. Thanks, Tom, welcome. Thanks for coming.
I can leave him.
All right, so one of the first items I had was drawing A2, how many propane tanks will there be with four carriers on site? Only two propane tanks were shown within the compound. Just want to make sure that you have adequate space, Tom, for additional third and fourth tank. Those can go underground in the town of Rutland, just so you know. That's pretty much, I think, where they prefer them, to be honest with you. Any issue with that? Sounds like you've got that covered here?
We have that covered, correct. Yeah, there is space if the third and fourth carrier decide if they, we're going to put a generator and use propane. What we found, for example, is not every carrier will actually install a generator here. So for example, Dish, Dish is not proposing a generator.
Okay.
We show two now, but there's space if a third and fourth one.
Okay, but you would design for the four tanks if need be, okay.
Yep.
Also, drawing A2, states the generators will be propane. Drawing C2 showed that the tank, showed the tank under the generator, which pretty much means it's a diesel generator setup. So I was just requesting, it contradicts whether propane or diesel. I asked them to advise and just revise the plan, which was appropriate. And they said AT&amp;T is proposing to use a propane generator. The detail on the plans will be updated to clarify that a diesel tank under the generator will not be used. Thank you. Item number three, can they provide a better detail of exactly where and how this roadway entrance ties into the 12 Phillips Road property? I know it was discussed in an earlier meeting that it's connecting up to the driveway of that road, of that property. And on the detailed plan, it looked like, I believe it was drawing EC2, it shows that it connects to the road. So you've given us some clarification, can you explain that to us?
Sure, yep. If you were looking at the plans, I think sheet EC1 might be the best one to give you an overall view of the site. But the plan is to, from this, from Phillips Road, to follow the existing house driveway. It's approximately 275 feet. And then we're going to turn it off and start the new access road from there to the tower site, and that's about 713 feet. So it is...
So can I ask you a quick question, sir? Is the end of the road the driveway of 12 Phillips Road? When you, that's pretty much a straight road, if I understand correctly. On this drawing, that road just kind of goes up straight, right?
Yeah. Yep. If you're familiar, Phillips Road, there's a 90-degree turn where it's Fairview Avenue intersects. So if you were to continue what looks like, continue straight down Phillips, that's actually the house driveway and the property driveway.
So just driving straight up that road, you go right into the driveway, in other words?
Yes, that's right.
All right, that's where I think I was confused, because it looks like you just tying onto the end of the road, and we were just, everybody was saying, even when Peter Crane from the Conservation Commission had commented that it was tying onto the driveway. But this plan is just, if you didn't know that, I guess that looks deceiving, so.
I think the one point of clarification, there is an easement that will follow both the new section of driveway and the existing driveway, and extend from Phillips Road to the tower compound. So there is line work on those plans that runs the whole line.
Yeah.
And that may be where some of the confusion was coming in, but it is new section and utilizing existing.
Okay. That makes a little more sense. I was just expecting like a driveway coming off on a 90-degree angle of Phillips Road, and you coming off of that, but when you look at the plans, obviously it's a straight way. Okay, thank you, that clarifies that. Item number four, please maintain, yeah, so you've agreed to keep the 75 feet of rip rap there. You know, you're only going 12 feet wide there, Tom, so I, you know, just like to, it's going to get, it's going to get abused, so the longer we keep that, the better, that'll keep everything, the site, you know, separated from the road and debris and everything, okay? Thank you for agreeing with that. And you'll update that plan, thank you. Number five, drawing P1, had a concern of the drainage of the roadway. So on both sides of that driveway, call it, where you're crossing over, you got those two, it looks like a couple of culverts going over where the wetlands is. It looks like there's a little dip from that top of the culvert section going back towards Phillips Road. And I was just wondering, I didn't see any particular type of management of the drainage there, Tom, and just was wondering what your plan was for that section there, that little, that little belly there. It's only a couple of feet of elevation or so, if that.
Yes, yep. So just to give you a little bit of an overview, at the, there is a small wetland crossing with the driveway, and that, that is, will be filed with Conservation. And at that wetland crossing, we're proposing to install two 18-inch culverts, and they're installed flat. And that's because it's not a flowing stream that we're crossing, which it's a wetland so we're, we're creating a hydrologic connection between both sides and where we cross that one. And when we do that, we have to raise the driveway, one to get the driveway above the wetland, two to provide cover over the culvert.
Sure.
And that's where you end up with about a two-foot fill for that section of road. And as you pointed out, the driveway is raised up in that area. What we have, in order to handle the stormwater in that section, if you look closely at that P1 sheet, we have some contours, but instead of running straight perpendicular across the driveway, they're shored on at angles, and that means it's, the driveway has a cross pitch there. So the intent is for any stormwater that falls on it, instead of the water running down the driveway, it'll, it's designed to pitch off the driveway quickly.
Sure. The center line is the high point.
That would be a crown. In this case, it's a pitch, so one side is higher than the other, and it pushes any water that falls off of one side. But it's, it's just a technique to make sure that water doesn't stay on the driveway for long, and eliminates any potential for erosion.
And when it gets to the side, do you feel there's enough, you know, what's managing that stormwater when it gets off that roadway, off that pitch?
Yep. For the most part, yeah, for the section leading up to those culverts, we're, we're close to matching the existing grade. And then as we rise up, it's built up, like you've mentioned, about two feet, and there's a little two-foot size slope, and then we're back down to the wet area where we're crossing the wetland.
So is there any pre-rap, or is there any particular vegetation being installed there?
Yeah, right now, we have it proposed to be for that, it's about two-foot elevation difference and five or six feet wide. We have that proposed to be vegetated. You know, if the board felt that it was appropriate, we could, we could stone line that to armor that section. There's not a lot of stormwater getting there. One of the things we take into consideration is how much area and how much water is flowing there. In this case, it's only water that would fall on the driveway and immediately be pushed to the side. But it's certainly something we could stone line that side slope for the...
Yeah, just that down slope. Yeah, if you don't mind doing that, if you can do something like that, you know, that would be good, just to keep that maintenance. Because you know that, the grades will change, you know, year after year, you know how it is.
Yep, it makes sense.
With the frost and the snow plowing, et cetera. Thank you. All right. If you can make that adjustment, that's good. If any board member has any questions anytime, please speak up, okay? I just want to keep rolling through these as quick as we can for the sake of time. I know this is, this topic is riveting. Item number six, P1 and P2, the tree cut line. So that tree cut line you guys show in the drawing, you've delineated that nice, you know, very well. That's the, that's it. That's all you're cutting, and you're good with the overhead lines and all the other utilities getting through there, and that'll be the limit of your tree cutting. Because one of the things, you know, just, we're just not going to, I mean, I know if this, if this does get approved, I don't want any other tree cutting on that parcel happening for, you know, for the protection of the view of this tower. So, you know, based on what your drawing is here, that's what you're stuck with, okay?
Yeah, understood. We're, we purposely, instead of creating a separate utility corridor, we are following the clearing associated with the driveway with the overhead lines, so that we don't have to clear additional trees for the line.
Okay. All right. Item number seven, you have the ball of detail for the, for the transformer pad, you just got to, you got to follow N Grid's plan there, so I just want to make sure that's clarified and understood by both parties. This is the ball of detail that you have. You show a detail, but National Grid is going to give you the detail for that, that you'll all have to follow.
Yes, yep, absolutely. They specify the size spacing.
Yeah, the whole, the whole underground detail, the whole pad detail, that's all done by, designed by them, and your installs have to, have to go by that, so, yep.
Yes.
And that kind of falls into number eight, the oil containment. They'll dictate whether you got to do that when you give them the site plan. It doesn't sound like you've submitted anything to them yet, obviously, correct?
Correct. The way that process generally works is, we have to have all of the approvals in hand, and then we get a work order, ProCham get a work order, and then they complete their final design. But as part of that process, they'll review the site plans and...
And from your, from your response to that, you certainly understand the size and dimension of that needed. You feel you got the room to install that oil containment system if you have to?
Yep, it's just an additional berm curb.
Takes up another three feet all around the transformer pad, so.
Yes, yep.
Okay. Just as long as you got the room there, Tom, that's all. Just want to make sure that that's not an issue, you don't have to come back for anything.
No, it's a good point, and we're comfortable we do have...
Yeah, I just want to make sure you have the area if they require it. I mean, you'll deal with that on your own, but just want to make sure that's not going to encroach on any of the tree cut lines or anything else, or whatever, what have you. Item number nine, drawing D1, please revise the detail number three reflect. Yeah, so we wanted to stick with the six inch and the three-quarter stone on the quarry hard pack for the top coat there. And instead of, you know, I know you had four to six on your plan there. And the same thing in Rutland, on item number 10, Rutland, you know, on a subdivision, Tom, we require 18 to 24 inches of gravel, which is pretty excessive. If you can just maintain minimum 12-inch underneath, because it's a long way, there's going to be a lot of water there, it's a narrow road, and just want to make sure that holds up well with all the, you know, it's not going to be light-duty vehicles going up that, so.
Yep, agree.
And you've agreed to that, so thank you. Item number 11, D1, detail number one, please conform that there'll be three rows in a prod, and you've got that on the, on the two fence gates, you'll have barbed wire going across that section as well.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And item number 12, I asked them if there was going to be a gate down at the bottom entrance somewhere. Sometimes you put it up, up the way like about 20, 30 feet, so, so you know, if a construction truck is going to go up there to do some testing or work on the equipment, they can pull off the road, unlock the gate, and then drive the rest of the way in. Does the board feel like there's a need for anything like that?
I don't think so.
I mean, the whole compound's fenced in with six-foot fence and barbed wire on the top of it, so.
I don't see what the gate would accomplish.
I mean, just from someone going up there, that's a pretty isolated road. I don't think there's a whole lot of traffic there. Paul, Rick, do you guys have any comment on whether we want to gate there or not? I don't feel it's needed, personally.
I feel, I mean, you're one way in, one way out.
Yeah. All right. All right, so, yeah, so we'll just, if you're not, you don't have to get into plan, we'll just leave it that way, okay, guys? Nobody seems concerned about it. I just wanted to bring to everybody, just wanted to raise that question. Number 13, the signage. So the only sign you're required, guys, you know, per your codes, Tom, and this also to you, Attorney Sousa, is just that one sign you show in the drawing, and then just update the plan so it shows that detail on that, on that fence where you're going to show it. So that's all understood before our building inspector and everybody going forward, and we know that, okay? And I'm assuming that, you know, for the telecommunications code, that's all you need, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
That's correct. I don't like solar, you got to put signs up all around the fence, all around the thing to keep people out every so many feet. So I just didn't know if there was anything like that in regards to telecommunications tower, that's all.
Now, this is one, this is one sign on the fence as you drive into the front entrance of the facility.
All right.
And it's, it's small, it's, I think it's 12 inches by 15 inches.
Correct, yeah, it was 12 by 15, and had, you had that listed clearly. Okay. 14, the lighting protection system, so you're going to have the lightning around the top of the tower, but as well, all the other equipment around the compound gets lightning protected as well?
Yes, there's an extensive lightning protection system that gets installed with these systems.
Ground grating and everything? Okay, good.
Yes.
Yeah, good, all right, that's good. That'll help keep that area, you know, protected if at best. And then the lighting, you're just going to have a little service light maybe over by the, by some of the equipment, but there's no street lighting going up that roadway planned, there's no, you know, big pole lights planned in the compound or anything like that, correct?
That's correct. It's a, it's a small work light on the side of one of the cabinets that, in the event that a technician needs to be out there, it's a shielded timed light.
Okay. Item 16 was, can a fall zone for a cell tower utilize a wetland area? And on the drawing, it does show a little wetland area about, I don't know, 60 some odd feet away from the compound. So I just asked that question, just trying to kind of cover every loop here. And I believe, Tom, you had, you had responded, that's not considered a wetland area, that little area? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's called an isolated wetland, so it's not a regulated, because it's, because it's a small pocket and it's not hydrologically connected. There are definitely wetlands on the property regulated further away, though. Those are, I think the closest point is 183 feet from the tower. But a fall zone for a tower is not something that's regulated by the wetlands particularly.
Okay, so...
In both cases, I think we're...
So whether or not it's near a wetland, it's irrelevant. It can fall into a wetland, basically, is that correct?
No.
Just for informational purposes, I'm just curious.
That's the way I read it as well. Mr. Chairman, the actual bylaw says that the personal wireless service facility itself cannot be in the wetlands, and it has no discussion on the, on the fall zone.
The fall zone.
Right.
I'd just like to ask David Maxon, the consultant, David, do you have any information or anything you could say regarding a wetland in the fall zone?
These towers are so well-built that they'll withstand weather that the houses around them will not, in the vast majority of cases. In the extremely rare circumstance that a tower fails at the foundation and topples over just in the wrong direction, first of all, I would say that Attorney Sousa has made a point that it's not really a requirement in the, in the bylaw, and it's apparently, according to civil engineer, not a requirement according to the wetlands guides. And personally, I just imagine, you know, if you have a large tree that falls in the woods and lands on a wetland, what, you know, what happens? That would be either cleared away, or it would just be left to rot. In a case of a tower, it would be cleared out, that's basically correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so that's not an issue. And then number 17, I might just ask them to give us a little detail about what size the concrete base for the tower was, and generally, the tower foundation's approximately 25 by 30 feet square, and it goes down about six to eight feet deep in the ground. So just so you have a rough idea what that's for. No bigger than what a hole for a house would be. I mean, an average-sized home is that size of a hole you dig in the ground for, for a foundation, correct?
Correct, yeah, garage, maybe.
Just this is full of concrete and steel where a house is just a basement.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one point of clarification on the gate itself. I was looking at my notes. I think what you were saying is that it's not a requirement that we place a gate at the front of the property.
That's correct. We will, we will not require a gate at the entrance.
Okay, because there's been some discussion that there may be one, you know, after you enter their property, go along their driveway, pass their garage, there might be some interest in putting a gate there, you know, before you come onto our newly constructed driveway towards the tower. So, but if, that hasn't been determined yet, but if we do put one there, we'll add it to the, we'll add it to the plans.
Yeah, I don't think, in my opinion, we're pretty indifferent to whether you do that or not, Attorney Sousa. Do that at your own, you know, choice.
Understood.
Anybody on the board have any other comments regarding these site issues?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right. Um, Attorney Suesa, do you have any other information or anything else you wanna share this evening?
I, I don't. Um, I'm happy to address, um, I think you mentioned at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, there were just a few waivers that were placed as part of our application. I'm happy to talk about those if you'd like. In addition to that, while I think the application itself addresses the standards for special permit and also for the dimensional variance that we're requesting, including references to federal case law that recognize, uh, uh, the need to fill a substantial gap as a unique circumstance to meet the variance standards. I'm happy to address any questions that you may have regarding that, that standard and, um, but I do also feel that our supporting statement addressed that, um, that issue.
Okay. Does the board feel he needs to, um, address those issues any more in detail or?
No, we haven't, yeah.
You haven't, right, we've gone over those. Yep, okay. Paul, Rick, uh, ZB A guys, you're good, right? Uh, you don't need Attorney Suesa to explain anything else? Pretty much where you're at?
Good.
Yeah, I'm great.
All right, great, thank you. Um, all right, so, um, at this point, I think we have all the information that we're gonna get. We've heard from the consultant, um, we've heard all the experts. We reviewed all the information. Um, there are, this is an application for site plan approval as well as the variances, which are, there are three of them, as well as the waivers. So, um, at this time, we, we can jump into the waivers and just discuss those real quick and make sure we can kinda firm those up. Um, Attorney Suesa?
Chris?
Uh, yes, Paul.
Uh, just a question, uh, has the variance application been changed to, uh, one hundred and twenty from a hundred and forty feet or are they still requesting a hundred and forty feet?
They, they have not changed that. It's still at a hundred and forty feet. Um.
Okay.
But they verbally agreed to reduce the tower in the last meeting to a hundred and twenty feet.
If we, if we so decided, if we want, yes, okay.
That, that's right, exactly. We, we were amenable to that change, um, provided that the tower gets, gets approved.
Yep.
And, uh, we would support that change to just one hundred and twenty feet on the record.
Thank you. Um, all right, so Attorney Suesa, jumping into the waivers, yeah, I, I'd like to segue into that.
Sure.
In your application, pages twenty to twenty-five of your application, you list a whole bunch of criteria where you ask for, you know, the information you've given is pretty much enough and, and, you know, you kinda ask for like that, a general waiver from all the information you've given if it wasn't enough, is that correct? Just explain that and request that waiver to me, please.
Yeah, so that's just a general waiver in the event that the board feels that, um, you needed more sightlines in particular. We feel that the, the photosimulations themselves address the requirements under the bylaw. We felt that the bylaw, the bylaw requirements were somewhat ambiguous, but we feel that the combination of the plans themselves, together with the photo simulations that we, we did on, um, really a two balloon test, together with additional simulations showing the various heights from one forty, one thirty, one twenty, uh, and so on, we feel that those meet the, the bylaw requirements relative to, uh, visual materials. And so we don't necessarily think that that's, uh, rises to the level of getting, asking for a variance.
Yeah, and quite honestly, I'm sorry?
We don't think it rises to the level where we need a waiver. We just made that clarification, uh, in the event of the report.
Quite honestly, everything we've asked for, like originally you only submitted on a hundred and forty foot tower, we actually do the hundred and twenty foot, you provided that for us, so as we went along, you know, he added supplemental information as we requested it, so I have no issue with those waivers. It's kinda water over the dam. You've given us everything that we've requested as far as that goes, so. Uh, just so, just for the board's purposes, those waivers, I think it's, I, at this point, I don't know if it's a waiver or just accept it as it is, so.
I agree.
Um, and then, um, to get into the maintainers of this waiver, the first one, um, item number eight on page twenty-six of your application is a waiver to, um, no, I'm, I'm sorry, that, that just starts the waiver, I believe that was the same thing really is, is twenty to twenty-five. Um, on, on, on page twenty-seven, you have a waiver there to, for the testing, for the RF testing, correct?
That's right. Um, under section sixty, um, A, there, we're asking for two different waivers in connection with section sixty. The first of which is radio frequency testing.
Yeah.
And monitoring. Um, I think there was some, um, testimony from Mr. Maxon of Vistrop that suggested that he was comfortable with the report that was prepared by Don Hayes, um, our physicist, that testing would not be necessary. And so we didn't think that, um, the ongoing monitoring was necessary. That being said, if the board wants there to be one test after AT&amp;T installs, for example, just to set a baseline, we're not trying to argue with you here, we're just feeling, we just felt that, um, the report prepared by Mr. Hayes shows that it were well in compliance, you know, well even under five percent of the limits set by the FCC. That being said, if the board wants to do one test, um, after it's installed, we wouldn't, um, object to that. We wanna try to be reasonable there.
Yeah, I think that's, um, a, a very appropriate thing, it's kind of a common item. And also one thing, Mr. Maxon also, um, and correct me if I say this wrong, David, but you also requested to add in the stipulation that the town can request, um, the carriers and, and Blue Sky to do a test should there be a reason, you know, some type of issue down, you know, going down the road or for whatever reason, the town feels something required, um, that you, you know, that'd be something that we'd put in an order of conditions and something to that degree. Uh, would you be amenable to that, Attorney Suesa?
Yes, absolutely, very much so.
Okay. So the one-time ninety-day test and then going forward, we, we, basically, the bylaw says they're gonna test every year. It, it's every year, correct? I believe it was?
Right, that's right.
Test the RF, but, you know, if they're gonna be less than five percent in the first ninety days, um, we would only be tested on an as-needed basis if there was ever an issue going forward, okay?
Right, absolutely.
And then again, as Attorney Suesa said, that ninety-day test gives us a baseline to see, to make sure their calculators were, where they said they were gonna be, which is, um, I think an important thing to do.
And, and then we'll have something in there that says that they're required to have a prompt response to town inquiry with regard to RF emissions or noise, right?
That's a great, yeah, exactly. So the noise kinda, we, the noise, pretty much, we can kinda talk the same issue here, right? You know, we'll do a ninety-day test, attorney?
Yes, I think.
And again, if there's any other issue with noise that, you know, you'll have to go out there and take some measurements and, and, and look at it from that point of view. If a neighbor's complaining about a generator running all night or whatever, we can, we can look into that from that point of view. Um. Hey, yeah, Chris?
Amenable to that as well.
Yes, Paul.
Um, I'd specifically like to see testing, um, as a condition done on any additions to the tower. So let's say, you know, they have another carrier go onto the tower, then at that point in time, a test would be, you know, automatically done, just to monitor um, the actual outputs of as new carriers go on to the, go onto the tower.
Understood.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Take it back.
David.
Just a, uh, just an observation. Um, when I'm asked to do a safety program for a client, uh, I handle a number of skyscraper rooftops in Boston. Um, it, the, the, the protocol is to do the computer analysis. If the computer analysis suggests it's a close call, then you go ahead and do post-construction measurements. Uh, so I would suggest that if, if you wanna put in anything regarding, uh, any future changes or additions, that you, you do it sort of according to that practice, which is require the applicant to show that same proof that they've shown in writing at this hearing. And if you have an expert review it, uh, and the expert says this is too close to call, then you can invoke the measurements. Um, the difficulty with measurements is that you're out there measuring, you don't know how busy the cell site is when you're taking measurements. So it doesn't prove anything. Uh, and that's where the calculations are actually more reliable than the measurements.
Um, all right, I, I do agree with him. I just, uh, for the peace of mind of the citizens of the town,
Mm-hmm.
I would like to still see an actual test done. I'm, you know, I understand the math, I agree with the math. I understand the algorithms and all, but for a lot of people that don't, that having a hard thing and then if, as you said, it's a low use, it's gonna be well below what the, uh, models say it would be and everybody's, there's no questions whatsoever.
Right.
With math, if you would be, if you would say. And again, we're only talking possibly two more because they've already got two on there?
Yeah.
Plus they're gonna do with force, so it'd be, you know, possibly two more at some point in time.
It, it, yes, if, if, if it's carefully worded, I mean, uh, one of the things is that, uh, they could be turning on something that's already connected to a tenant but not being used. Um, and, you know, is that a change? Do we need to mon- monitor that? Or are we just talking about when a new carrier is added to the tower at another level? So, so we have to kind of suss out what we think the threshold is for this. Is it tiny increments or is it this big step where you have a new carrier being added?
New carrier.
Yeah, I would suggest new carrier as well.
Yeah.
Personally, I defer to the board.
Do you agree with that, David, the new carrier?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't wanna be a, a, a shelf for the applicant, but I think in terms of, uh, sort of good public policy, that we wanna do it for things that are meaningful and, you know, uh, I think this, this is, that, that's an appropriate rate threshold.
And it would pick up small, at that point, it would pick up anything small that was added on to anyway.
Right, 'cause it's looking at the entirety, not just the new guy, but the, the total, um, of the facility, yes, so.
So right now, in our bylaw, if they add a carrier, do they have to come back to us? I, I didn't think they did.
That's not the way I.
No, that's.
That's not the way I understand our bylaws, that they will not have to come back. I mean, it, it's designed for the four carriers, so up to those four carriers, you can basically add those at your will, correct?
Uh, upon, uh, issuance of a building permit.
Correct, yes, exactly. Sorry, the building permit. So, are we saying, and David, are you saying that, or Paul, are you saying that you want them to come before the board with these calculations?
No.
Prior to getting the permit for the thirty-fourth carrier?
No, they go, all right, they go put the third carrier on. They would provide the board at that, they've already approved for it, they're just gonna provide the, uh, board after it's installed with the calculations and the actual test results.
But David, I, I thought you said something about having the data beforehand, or Paul, did you say that? I, I just wanna make sure. Neither one of you said that, or am I just hearing wrong?
Uh, I think Mr. Maxon proposed the report first, but, uh, Mr. Crane, uh, suggested that he would rather have readings instead. And so I think, hopefully, I'm summarizing that correctly.
Yeah, I would say, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna do your calculations and then you get everything installed, you do calculations, I mean, they could be done today, long before anything's put on there. The actual physical test comes when, when that actual carrier is installed. And that's what we're looking for is a, a confirmation of the, uh, the model that is ready to run.
So after the tower is built and after each additional carrier, I don't think that that's, that seems reasonable.
Yeah, it seems reasonable.
Yeah.
That's, that's right.
And you, you could make that a condition that just says that the, uh, the building commissioner cannot issue the, uh, certi- certificate of use for the new facility until the, that documentation has been, uh, provided.
Yeah, that's a good point, too. I, I like that. And so I, I would like to ask you, Mr. Maxon, if you could just kinda put some verbiage together for this and send that to us possibly, that we could, you know, include that in, in a, in a potential decision here, if this gets, um.
And I think the terminology would be, um, certificate of occupancy, right? So after issuance.
Yeah. Yeah, the condition, the condition to, to certificate of occupancy.
Building commissioner here.
Approved and reviewed by somebody like David or somebody, just to check it out, make sure we're good, okay?
Okay.
All right. And that would go to the building commissioner. I'm not sure there's a po- a, a process known in the, in the, in the town for this, it doesn't happen every day, but that'll be the process. We'll send it to the building commissioner and, you know, we can get in touch with David and make sure it's good, okay? All right. Um, I don't think we have to be that specific for the sound. I think the sound is, you know, do the initial test with that one generator and then if there's any issues with noise going forward with any of the, with any of the, the, you know, locals, we just deal with it on, on that basis. I mean, the generator, you can measure that, that's a little more specific and pretty obvious, so. I don't think we have to get too crazy there. Um, all right. All right, and, um, is there anything else as far as the waivers go, attorney?
I, I think just the next one was not cer- was not necessarily a waiver, it was section sixty-one, post, uh, construction removal bond. So what we would typically do is provide a, uh, a construction estimate on what it would take to, um, take down the tower.
Yeah.
And that, and so we'll provide that to the building inspector, um, and that could be a condition of this decision as well.
Yeah, so I, I looked at your estimate in your application. Um, I felt it to be light, um, extremely light. Thirty thousand, I think it's gonna cost a lot more than thirty thousand to take a tower down. Um, so, um, I, I'm inclined to somewhere be up around, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars for a bond. And I wanna clarify one thing, 'cause originally, when I first looked at this, I was like, boy, you're gonna need like a quarter of a million dollar bond to put this place back the way it was. But our bylaw states, he does not have to regrade anything or do anything otherwise. That road and the pad can stay. That will be the, the own, the property owner's responsibility. So all he has to do is take his fences, equipment and his tower down and go away. And his estimate was for thirty thousand dollars. Um, it's on page, um, four of his application, uh, no, I'm sorry, that's the, uh, I had it here somewhere. Waivers and bonds, yeah, it's right here. Um, I had it in things somewhere, but I know it was around thirty thousand dollars and, um, I felt it, you know, a crane for that size tower costs a lot more than about twelve hundred dollars a day. Um, so I'd like to discuss that. I, I don't know if you wanna review that a little bit, try to get this into at least a fifty to sixty thousand dollar range. Um, and plus, I don't know if the board wants to consider like, you know, in, in ten to twenty years from now, what is the cost gonna be? That's, those are today's costs, you know? So do we feel, if, if today's cost is fifty to sixty thousand dollars, twice as much as they've submitted, should we go to a hundred thousand just to cover us from, uh, inflation with the rate we're on right now? I'm not sure you could get a bond, but hopefully inflation will slow down someday here in America, but, um, try to, try to, what, what's your thoughts on that as far as everybody on the board?
My, my thoughts would be, we're fine starting with fifty thousand, perhaps there could be, uh, cost of living increases every five years so that the bond would have to be increased over time rather than going right to a hundred thousand now.
David, have you had any experience on, on drafting these or framing these up? What, what, any history?
Uh, yeah, I also have experience with constructing towers. Um, a tower can be put up and a tower can be taken down in a day. So the cost of a, a crane is just one day and it's not a terrible lot, a lot of money. And then a crew to go with that, you have maybe, uh, four laborers. Um, and then the tower itself has scrap values, so there is some recovery of cost, uh, when that thing is trucked away, uh, to, uh, a scrap yard. So, um, I, I, I'm not quite as suspicious of the number that, that you've seen. Uh, I have seen low-ball numbers in, you know, ten to twenty thousand range, which I think are a little bit, uh, uh, dicey, so. Um, uh, and then the other thing that I, I do like to observe is that, um, I, I like to look at, at doing things in a regulatory fashion that have, uh, uh, a measurable benefit to the regulator, to the community. And I have not yet seen one of these bonds invoked in thirty years that I've been dealing with cell towers in the region. Um, it, it's just, uh, something else that create a more bureaucratic burden for the administrators in the town, especially if you have to track CPI indexes and things. And for the applicant, for every cell tower, they have to do this, they have another bond that they have to put into the hopper and track. So I, I really have to suggest that you carefully consider the cost benefit of this whole process for the town and the burden to the applicant for this and, and decide whether it really is needed. If it is, then the, the, this model to, to maintain a, a cost index is, uh, it's sensible because you're right, in a number of years, the dollar amount is going to be, uh, totally insufficient for moving the tower.
Thank you. And, um, that's a good point. And to attorney's point, that's a good point, I like that. And so if you're willing to take a fifty thousand dollar bond with that, with that, you know, every five year increase, I'm fine with that, attorney.
Okay.
If you just wanna draft something up and recap that, that'll be terrific. Anybody on the board have any questions with that or any comments?
No.
I think that protects the town from just, you know, the, I mean.
I think Rick has something to say.
What's that? Rick, you got something to say?
No, I got, that's, that's completely reasonable, Chris.
Okay. Paul, you're good?
Yeah.
All right, so that's all the waivers, correct, attorney, and any, all those issues there?
Yeah, the only last one was section sixty-three, which, uh, rather than having a five-year limit on a special permit.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, we would respectfully request that it not have a limit. Yeah, we would respectfully request that it not have a limit, simply because these towers are typically constructed for longer periods of time, you know, they're a big investment, not only in the infrastructure itself, but in the community, we want to make sure that we're there long-term. So we would ask that the five-year limit not be placed on the special permit.
What's the life expectancy of these towers?
Clearly beyond twenty-five years, but probably closer to thirty-five at least. I would defer to Mr. Maxson if he feels otherwise.
A different kind of tower, but same general construction principles. The TV towers in Needham and in other areas up in Oilstone and such, some of those have been up since the mid nineteen fifties. If they're properly maintained, they will last as long as a residential home will. So then I guess your question of need, and I think we're always going to need towers to provide that umbrella of coverage that this small wireless facility has then come in later to fill in. So, yeah, at least the lease durations tend to be in the twenty to twenty-five year range.
Five-year limit doesn't make much sense to me, once it's there, to have to do this again.
Well, I agree, and you know, it's a funny thing, just to give everybody a little bit of history, but if you're familiar with the planning board and some of the other special permits they issue, I've been at certain meetings and, you know, they've got things that go like two, three years, and then these people come back in for these things, and it's, I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, nothing's changed, I mean, I've seen a guy get a special permit to build something, he hadn't even started construction, his special permit ran out, he had to come back to get it approved again, hadn't even started yet. And it's just, and the planning board is, I don't know, I mean, from what I've seen, they stick to the bylaw on it, but personally, I just kind of feel it's a waste that, like David said, it's kind of just a bureaucratic process, you know, nobody really needs to waste their life just, you know, going through a rubber stamp process, so. I have no problem waiving this completely. If anybody on the board have any issue with that?
No.
Waiving this, you guys all right, waiving the five-year limitation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Paul, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right, so we're fine waiving that, we'll grant that waiver.
Thank you.
And that's, that's the last one, correct attorney?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, so really, time to get down to brass tacks here. We have three variances that will need to be voted upon, and a site plan that will be needed to vote, be voted upon, as well as considering, you know, all orders of conditions and things of that nature, all right? So I think at this point, we've pretty much covered every ounce of information, covered everything. I'm just going to open this up to the public on the items we've discussed tonight, being the site plan and these waivers, okay? So if anybody in the public at this time, if, nobody on the board has anything else, right? To say?
No, I'm off the...
You're good, attorney Suesa, you're good, David, you're good right now?
Yes.
You know, my question is just if you're considering any conditions, whether you want to talk about those now or after you've voted on the main motion, A motion.
Good point, excellent, I like that idea. Let's talk about the conditions, all right, so.
Chris?
Yes.
Would it be a lot easier if we just voted on the simple variants that don't have conditions on them?
Well, I think I'd just like to talk about these order of conditions before we vote, because it's information we should share with everybody, and just, I've got a whole list of things here that I'd like to discuss. And so before we do any voting, I think all the information, all the discussion should be out there, is that okay?
Well, I mean, I'd like to vote on things individually, I mean, like for example, we have the height variant, that's...
Well, we have three height variances that we will vote on, but prior to making a vote, Paul, I'd just like to discuss these order of conditions, we're not voting on these order of conditions. I just want these items discussed and brought out in the air, so that everybody knows what, you know, comprehensively what we'll be, we'll be kind of voting upon.
And I was just going to say, before the board actually makes their final votes, we should be closing the public hearing prior to that, so any discussion should happen.
Thank you, excellent, all right, so let's talk about these order conditions. Just, I'm just going to go through some things here, try to speak as clearly and quickly as I can, but just some, just some items that I had. Like we discussed earlier, no other tree removal on the site, on the entire parcel. To maintain as much coverage of the compound and the tower, all that tree area will remain, okay? And quite honestly, no splitting or separating or subdividing this parcel, that's a pretty big acreage up there. The land outside that compound is being used for fall zones. The property owners, and this really doesn't go to the Blue Skies or AT&amp;T, but this is more on the property owners, that they're going to have to agree just that, they're not going to, as long as that tower is there, they can't subdivide the property. And they can't add any, you know, can't add a home, cut this thing up, put a home down in that road somewhere, all right? And again, we'll have to finalize, I'll look to the attorneys, you know, Jake, attorney Suesa, attorney Soret, you guys can just kind of frame these things up, but I just kind of want to get these out there. Now, we're going to, obviously, if we were to vote on this, it's going to be a hundred twenty-foot tower. I think the board agrees, we're not up for a hundred forty-foot, the applicant, you know, is okay with the one-twenty, so. When we do go, when we do discuss this, Paul, and vote on this, this variant should be for a hundred twenty-foot tower, not a hundred forty-foot tower, okay?
Actually, I actually, Chris, feel that if we are voting on a hundred forty-foot tower, might as well, because we did learn that you go a hundred and twenty foot, they get an extra twenty feet anyway.
Well, that's something else I got, that's one of the other things I got on here. And I don't know if this is legal, and so I'm going to ask David Maxson when I say this, but... So we've talked, in the hearings here, there's been some, some language and some laws that allows a cell tower carrier to add twenty feet to the tower at their desire. And I'm going to request that they lose all rights to do that.
Yes.
That they waive any right, and if, I don't know if this is legal to do, but that's what I want to make an order of condition here, that they can't just come in and add twenty feet to this. The max this thing's ever going to be is a hundred and twenty with a one-foot lightning rod on it, and that is it. And is that something attorney Suesa, you'd be amenable to?
Chris, Chris, if I may, I mean, all the numbers we saw showed that for them to put the four, they really have four viable carriers on there, they needed the hundred and forty feet.
Now, we discussed at the last meeting that they could do all four carries at the hundred and twenty feet, Paul. Correct, attorney Suesa and David?
So we think we can, I think the way, what you're referring to is the eligible facilities request. And the eligible facilities request, also known as sixty-four oh nine, runs to the carriers themselves rather than to Blue Sky Towers. And so what I can't do is waive the rights of some future carrier to come in and make an argument that's under federal law. What I think we could do is, and I think Mr. Maxson talked about this as well, is have a condition whereby if we're going to do that, then we just need to prove to the town that we need the extra height in order to fill that gap in coverage. And I think practically, that's probably how it would work. The fourth carrier would look at the tower and say, boy, I'm now in the trees, or I'm just not getting the propagation that I need, I really need to go at one-thirty, or whatever that height is. And so I think practically, that's how it would work, and we would, it would be a condition that we would have to present those plots to the board. But what I can't do is just, I can't waive sixty-four oh nine rights of a wireless carrier that I don't represent.
All right, my side. Yeah, what I've seen other towns do, and this I think has yet to be tested in court, is there is a clarification in the FCC's interpretation of section sixty-four oh nine that if the design of the facility involves some kind of stealthing, some kind of attempt to mitigate its visual impact, that a section sixty-four oh nine, may not deny and shall approve application for an increase in height, can't defeat the stealthing. And so what I have seen other towns do, and you might want to consult with counsel on this, in the crafting of this, but would be language to the effect that this height has been chosen specifically because it is limiting its visual impact, and any increase would defeat the intent of that, that height limitation. Therefore, it's not eligible for a section sixty-four oh nine, pretty much by right approval, and would have to go, inherently would have to go back for a special permit and for proof of need and whatever else might be involved going forward. Now, that's, as I said, I've seen some towns try that, and that's the one strategy I've seen to kind of put a lock on an automatic extension of something that you're approving today, and you're approving the height today because you think it's an appropriate compromise, and you really don't want to give them the right to just walk all over that in five years.
I don't disagree with that interpretation of sixty-four oh nine. Not been around long enough, there's not enough case law to think back up that interpretation. But I think, but I think that would be a path that we would be amenable to.
So we can require that, bottom line is, if we can get them to come back in front of us, that's...
That's the idea.
That's the idea, I mean, we just want them to have to come back to the ZBA and then, you know, we know it's just, you know, going to be a little...
So language is, something like the height has been chosen specifically because it minimizes the visual impact, therefore, the height shall not be automatically extended without a variance?
Or a new site plan approval.
Yeah, new site plan approval would necessarily be a variance.
Yeah, okay.
Quite possibly both, because they would need both, I guess, you'd have to redo the site plan approval and the variance for the additional height, just like they're in right now. Okay, all right. All right, good, thank you, all right, the hundred twenty-foot tower. Also on the decibels, I just want to put in there, attorney Suesa, you know, I wasn't too thrilled about the gentleman, I believe his name was Doug, that did the sound testing for you. I just thought he was very generic, I asked him a few questions. In your application, you actually spell out, it's a polar generator. And when I asked him, he didn't know what generator he was using, so. I wasn't too convinced, his, his, his calculations were really thorough and done well enough. There was a couple of things like that, so I was a little disappointed in that, with that gentleman. So I just want to put in there that whatever generator you provide, it's going to have a fifty-eight decibel at twenty-three feet sound attenuated rating. That's certainly capable to get with a, you know, an enclosure around the generator, but that's something I just want to make sure, because I know personally, doing enough generator installations myself, that at that location, with the distance we have to the lot lines, you won't have any issue with being over the fifty decibel at the lot line dB required by the bylaw. So that's something I would be looking for. The bond amount we discussed. And then the other thing is camouflaging the pole. I don't know what the board, you know, feeling is on that, if we feel we need to do that, or...
I think it makes it look worse.
Me too.
It's in the woods, so we already camouflage, pretty much.
Yeah, okay, so that's not something we're going to require here, right, in order of conditions, okay? And we'll wait to hear from the public, then the waivers, and the... And obviously, this will be subject to the approval of the Conservation Commission. And so that's all I have, other than the waivers we discussed, we'd add those waivers in as we discussed as well, okay? Anything else from anybody on the board?
No.
Mr. Maxson, do you think, you know, we've got this pretty well framed up from order of conditions and whatnot? Do you see any issues or any problems with anything we've done, or anything we're missing, anything you suggest?
No, no surprises, no, I've been kind of tracking the standards in the bylaw, just making sure that you're, you're kind of covering the bases, and I think you're, you've touched on them, so I've got nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. So this time, I don't, I don't believe there's anything else to discuss other than where we stand and how we're going to vote on this. So do you want to open up to the public right now and get their comments and all this information we've given tonight?
Yeah, sure.
All right, Paul, Rick, Soret, you guys good with that? We'll just open this up to the public right now, you have anything else?
Yeah, I have nothing, but I, the discussion from the public should be, as you indicated, it's going to be limited to just the issues we discussed tonight, right?
That's correct, yeah, I just want to keep this to the issues that we've discussed tonight, okay? And when you do speak, please just give your name and your address to Ms. Murphy right here, so she can put that in the meeting notes, okay? At this time, is anybody in the public, show your hands, ma'am, go ahead.
Karen Stewart for Phillips Road, I have a couple of questions. One is going back to the emails, I had also sent an email asking the board to look at the water tower. I thought that part of the whole premise of this was that AT&amp;T had to show, or Blue Sky Towers had to show that there was no other potential place, that location for this tower, and I thought that the independent RF engineer indicated that the water tower was another viable location. So why are we dismissing that?
Basically dismissing that because about, within about, just a few hundred feet away, one of the locations that they had in their plan, they had, they had put multiple locations, and we discussed this a little earlier tonight, but I'll do as briefly as I can. Twenty Glemwood Road, which is right at the bottom of Wheel of Road, okay, you come right out onto it. And that hundred, that hundred and twenty forty-foot tower right there would be just as high, if not higher, than the water tank would be, at sixty feet tall, with a tower on it, with a, with a, you know, an antenna attached to the top of that sixty-foot tank. So, and I don't think there's sixty feet of difference in height between those two locations, but regardless, it's pretty close. And that area was rejected by the applicant because it's going to require another tower on the other side of the hill. So a tower on that side of the, of the town, with the, with the height of the center of the town, and this is what they discussed early back in the meetings, that there'd be an issue with having to put two multiple towers within the town. And personally, I'm not in favor of that. I'm just in favor of having the one single tower where they can co-locate, and that limits the quantity of towers.
I guess I'm a little confused because I don't understand why the independent RF engineer didn't clarify that. It sounds like there's a contradiction.
Chris, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
All right, as I stated earlier at the opening of the meeting, the water towers are not available, and they're not an issue with this, this meeting right now, as the availability of those has to go through the select board or the planning board to ask for RFPs. That's not what this board does. This board does not say, oh, go find another site, or, you know, oh, here's a site that the town can do. That's not under the per purance of this board. This board looks at what was given us, a site's available to them. The town has not made that site available to them, so it's really not, it's a non-issue at this point in time, as far as this board is concerned, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, the zoning board is not here to discuss, you know...
No, we're going back to the premise of the application, that there's only one site, and we, the town hired an independent RF engineer who identified another site. So I'm just trying to get clarification on that.
Well, like I just said, I just said, it was so close in location to Twenty Glemwood Road, that was another location that was rejected by them. The consultant did review those locations and agreed on those. And those things being within five feet, ten feet of each other, I just don't feel like it's going to be a productive issue. And then you have the whole other issue that Mr. Crane suggests too, as well, is we don't even know if the town's going to let that happen. And that's in a, that's in a residential area as well, you're going to have the same issues there as it is, you know, as far as regards to residential areas here. So it's, you know, it's pretty much the same kind of location, give and take.
It's not, it's not available, end of story, it's not an available site at this point in time.
But regardless, yeah, go ahead, what's your next question?
My next question and concern is that Phillips Road, as well as Fairview, are both pretty much pitted dirt roads. One lane, just one car width. How is heavy construction machinery going to impact those roads?
Well, I mean, I don't really know how to answer that, I mean, obviously...
We did discuss this, I think at the second or third meeting, this issue came up, we did discuss it at length, and we asked a lot of questions about how much traffic was going to be involved with not only building the tower, but maintaining the tower, and based on the information we received, it's very, very little traffic. There's a guy that drives down there in a pickup or utility truck how many times a year?
Yeah, a couple, three times, four times a year. And again, you know, I think I should just, let me just say this to the quantity of traffic. It's going to be no different than if someone put an addition on that road, on their house. You're going to have a concrete truck come in there, you're going to have excavation equipment come in and dig the hole. So everybody on that street has the right to do that, and if there's an issue with that, that's something you have to deal with that person. I'm not, that's a... I'm not, that's a private road, I believe, is it? I'm not even sure, to be honest with you, if it's a public right-of-way, or if it's a private road, and who maintains that. I'm not sure how that's maintained now, ma'am.
The town does.
The town does.
The town plows it, and the town grays it twice a year.
All right, so then that's, you'd call the town and have them repair the road, if that's what you've been doing all along. But, you know, just like if you want to put an addition on your house, and dig a, you know, 20-foot hole square, and put a six-foot, you know, eight-foot addition in, you know, foundation in, traffic will be pretty much the same, ma'am. And it, you know, it's only going to be, it's not going to be cosmoing down to that lot every day, as Jacob said, okay?
That's right.
All right, anything else? Yeah, yeah, please, Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, so Tom Johnson's here from Pro-Tower. He has, there's a protocol on how, you know, how we monitor the condition of the road before construction and after construction. After construction, you're absolutely right, there's very little traffic. It's just a technician that's going to the site to not really even climb the tower, but just to look at the radio cabinets and make sure they're performing in accordance with their standards. But Tom, if you could just talk briefly about the protocol relative to the construction activity itself, and what you do to monitor the condition of the road before construction and then after construction.
Sure, thanks. You know, we run into this pretty often, actually, with, just based on where cell towers end up being constructed. In a case like this, what we prefer to do is to meet with the town road agent or folks from the DBW. We'd like to walk the existing road with them prior to the start of construction, document the condition of the road. And then, you know, obviously we'll bring our construction equipment in and through there. Any damage that may occur to the road, we'll be responsible for repairing. And then at the completion of construction, we walk it again with that same person and make sure that they, that they're inspecting the road, and that we haven't left any damage in the road by the time construction's completed. So there's a pre and a post-inspection, just to make sure that the road is left, you know, the same or better than when we started.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Sure?
I got a comment. My name's Justin Mellon. I live at 35 Vista Circle. I love that they provided us some photos of what it looks like, but I believe that the best it's going to look like, it doesn't encompass any of the other seasons, you're going to be able to see right through the foliage.
Excuse me, there was two photo sessions done. Did you see both of them?
Yes.
One in August and one in December. So that encompasses the high growth and the no growth, okay? Just so you know.
And you'll be able to see the barbed wire fence regardless, from the other side of the lot. My biggest concern is just the schools. The tower overlooks both the soccer fields, and I don't feel comfortable with my dad, who manages the fields, or myself, or students, being under the tower. It's oppressive, you're under it for two hours, playing soccer a day, whatever it'd be. It's just another thing you don't expect. It's okay that the tower's at the fire department, you expect a tower to be there. You look over on the side of the woods, you don't expect a booming tower overhead, when you're there for recreational business. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
She has a question.
Yeah, she was, I did see someone on Zoom, they had your hand up. Did someone on Zoom have their hand up prior?
Robert, up in the corner.
Mr. Liptak.
Mr. Liptak, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Robert Liptak, 319 Main Street. One, just a few comments, and I got a question. The comment about petition is that anyone who's a town resident signed the petition, and this zoning bylaws for everybody. I don't live near this property, but I have to see it every day when I crash by it. So that's why I signed the petition. Number two, I'd like to ask the chairman, did you say that you don't want this tower to go over 120 feet? Yes or no?
That is correct. I am for this tower at 120 feet, 121 with the lightning rod.
Okay, is David Maxson a lawyer?
He's the consultant that we hired to review the site plan, our bylaws, everything the applicant has submitted, and that's what, he's the consultant.
I'm just asking a question, yes or no, is he a lawyer?
No.
Okay. Have you consulted town council on this, yes or no?
We have not.
Okay. Sort of related to this, but overall, and I think you should consult town council, but if you want it to be 120, never go over 120, it seems to me that you're going to have to prove something, I don't know if that addition, is it 40 feet they can go up if they wanted to, through whatever regulation, that you should approve something that's 80 feet, if you know that in the future, you know, some possibilities for some legal something, but they know 40. Coming back to you is the same thing as you are right now. Why come back? You should decide now. You go at 80 feet, and they'll keep what they, of course, they agree, they know it's going to go 40 more, and they'll get 120. I mean, if you go 120, they're going to get what they want. And thirdly is, this is a private road, doesn't everyone on a private road own the center of the road? And shouldn't they be granting permission for the easement? And I'd like a yes or no question on that.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, Chris, I can, on that, if the town is maintaining and plowing that road, it's not a private road.
Can the town please pay for it?
I'm just saying, guys, please, if the town is maintaining it under state law, it's not a private road. Now, if they're not doing it, then that's one thing. But you don't, you have it, when you have an easement in that property, you, people have the right to access it and go through that, so.
Right, the road is already there.
To obtain an easement through the property.
That property owner has whatever, that, excuse me, sir, the property owner of 12 Phillips Road has whatever right to access that property. And if he allows someone to build construction on that property, he's the one who gives them the right to come up that road and do that. And I don't see where you can, you can stop them. But I would suggest you just speak to a lawyer if you have an issue with that, but I don't think that's relevant to this site plan hearing. I think that's an issue that is between lawyers, and I don't think that's relevant. Would you have something else with Liptak?
So what is your thoughts about asking for 80 feet, knowing that eventually you could come back and get the 140 that they want?
I don't think 80 feet is, no, I'm not going to do that. I'm in agreement with the 120.
You're stepping on your own.
Excuse me, you're going to let me talk, sir, please? Thank you.
Sure, certainly.
I'm in agreement with the 120. The consultant has specifically said that between 106 and 120 feet below 106, this tower, you're not, it's not going to work. It's useless. And I also want to point out a document that was given to us in the application, is about, he listed 11 other towers in towns of Barry, Princeton, Holden, Oakham, also in Rutland, Spencer, Paxton. That's the area, this, that 120-foot tower will be the lowest tower in all these towers.
I can add to that.
Just for the record, this is not a high tower, when you consider all the other 11, 12 towers in that whole geographical area. So that's why I feel, Mr. Liptak, that this 120-foot tower is acceptable when they, and that's, that's that.
Chris, may I add to that?
Yeah.
All right, to the chair, Mr. Maxson also did tell us how to limit at 120. There was fairly lengthy discussion, we just had on that.
Right. That was in the last meeting, I don't want to review that.
I'm sorry, let's through the chair.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Liptak, the whole point that you're making is essentially mute, because we've going to put in the conditions that eliminate the, what was it, 68?
6409.
Thank you very much, Attorney. That by calling it a concealment, camouflaging significantly there, that it does not give them the right to just keep adding on 40.
What I'm just cautioning you that.
Have that discussion, that was really already addressed.
Through the chair, Mr. Maxson's not a lawyer, and incorporate language into your application, whatever, that, you know, you should consult a lawyer, you shouldn't just go by someone's not a lawyer. And I don't know what else I can say.
Mr. Chair, I speak with.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Liptak. Yes, Mr. Maxson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I have volunteered that I'm not a lawyer, and I have recommended that there are certain things that you might want to get advice of counsel on, so I don't think there's any disagreement with Mr. Liptak on that. The issue, and I think Mr. Crane, I don't know if I pronounced her name correctly or not, but is, I think, on point. And that is, Section 6409 allows a tower owner or wireless facility operator to get a tower extended up to 20 feet, pretty much by right, unless it defeats the camouflage. Mr. Liptak has, in fact, captured the other approach that I have suggested in public hearings, but not tonight, which is, first of all, the number's 20 feet, not 40. So it would be to approve the tower at 100 feet, knowing that it's possible they could get a, pretty much by right, authorization to get another 20 feet, and then that would be it, they would have used it up. I have suggested that a number of times, and when a board adopts these kinds of clauses or conditions with the advice of counsel, I have not yet seen the one that Mr. Liptak suggested, and that I have suggested at times, be invoked. They generally tend to go to the other approach, but Mr. Liptak is correct, that if that's something you wanted to be sure was worded carefully, that I can certainly suggest some wording, but advice of counsel on this very untested, uncharted waters would be appropriate.
Yeah, you have said that, I agree, Mr. Maxson, and that's one thing, at the end of this, I was going to actually discuss with the board. I do, my opinion is that we run this through town council on this decision before we sign off on it. But we have to also figure out the timing of all that, because once we vote on this, we have only so much time to get all that done. So we have to, that's something we're going to have to talk about as a separate condition. I don't want to get into that right now, prior to this open discussion, but yes, thank you very much. And to Mr. Liptak's point, we, I'm certainly very strongly recommending to have this reviewed by town council. But although we have two lawyers on the board, still, I think the town council should be involved.
Chris, Attorney. Chris, you know, I've got experience in dealing with the town council. You know, it's an attorney at Copelman and Page, they're generalists, they deal with a lot of municipal issues. We are not going to get a valid legal opinion from Copelman and Page on this. We would have to find, you know, someone who's versed in telecommunications. It wouldn't be KP, it would have to be somebody else. I'm going to, we can discuss this, we can certainly discuss this, but, you know, you're right, there are two attorneys on here, and I want to hear what Jake says as well, but I really, as an attorney, I really don't like to see, and I'm not pointing my fingers at anybody, I don't like to see people, you know, playing the legal card, like with non-attorneys, and say, well, you know, you better not do anything until you talk to an attorney, you know. Between Jake and I, we got probably more than 50 years of legal experience, between the two of us. And I feel very solid about this, and our methodology, I think we've gone above and beyond what we needed to do to flush this out. Now, that said, you're the chair now, if you think we need counsel, I'll volunteer to, you know, to find counsel that might be appropriate, but it's going to be expensive, and I don't know if it's necessary. But I just want to throw my two cents in, as an attorney.
Yeah, no, thank you. I always, you know, you and Jake and Minardi's here, you know, we're very fortunate to have you three guys on this board to discuss these legal items, so, you know, I, Jake, any comment?
I don't see the need for outside counsel, I just, I'm not sure what they would be reviewing for us. Are they just going to be reviewing?
Really just the language.
Whether or not the tower could be added on to without coming to the board, and if so, how much. I mean, I think we know already that they've got a potential, or a new carrier might have a potential of another 20 feet. But I'm comfortable with the restrictive language that we've discussed at length. I think that language would require any addition to come back before the board, and I'd be happy with that.
Okay. All right, I mean, yes, to me.
If I may, and I'm not certain, but I don't know if there's a specific process or procedure that would have to be followed to use counsel other than town council. I don't know if that would complicate it.
Yeah, I mean, it's like bringing in David Maxson again, another consultant.
First thing, Tamika, I could comment on that.
Go ahead.
As a board, we do have the power to hire outside experts, including specialized legal counsel.
Okay.
It would be the same thing that we did with David Maxson, we would ask AT&amp;T to basically pay for our own legal expert on this issue. This would not incur a cost to the town, we have the right to do that, just like we could hire a civil engineer if we needed to, which we've done in the past.
Well, you've been the previous chairman for 20 years, and you're a lawyer for a lot longer than that, and Jake, I mean, I trust your opinion, I don't know, Bob, if you have any comment, but if you guys are fine with this from a legal point of view, I'm no one to dispute that, and I would say we just roll that way. Paul, do you have any comments as far as that goes? Are you good with that? You're on mute, I think. Paul, you're on mute?
Not going to hear it, but it's on mute.
Sorry, I don't believe we need the town council at all. I feel that Jake and Rick have plenty of expertise to properly word any findings.
And I do agree, Rick, to your point, town council, on less, on much lesser issues, we've gotten very vague responses, and.
Big time.
They're not really going to give us anything, I mean, you would have to go to somebody specific.
They're just going to regurgitate the bylaws.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so we good with that, as far as the lawyers go, all right? We're good, no legal, we'll just let you guys draft, you know, go review that language? Okay, Ms. Strita, you're up next, please.
Hi, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't have the ability to raise the hand using the computer.
That's fine, ma'am, no problem.
I think it makes a lot of sense what Mr. Serret is saying about hiring counsel who is versed in the telecommunications act. And Attorney Paul Cranston, in his May 17 letter to the zoning board, wrote, quote, "The application contains a detailed legal analysis regarding how the proposal satisfies the standard for grant of a variance under the bylaw and state law, as they are affected by the telecommunications act of 1996. Again, this analysis and the references made therein require highly technical and legal review, not normally undertaken by your board. I respectfully request the board retain counsel to review the legal analysis." And also, as Mr. Maxson referred to, he did also, and quote, strongly suggest in the last hearing, that the counsel be consulted on this. So I do, again, just to reiterate, I think it makes a lot of sense what Mr. Serret said about hiring counsel versed in telecommunications law. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, Mr. Gold.
Hi, David Gold, for Phillips Road. I'd like to ask the board if there was any conversation with AT&amp;T about David Maxson's suggestion that the water tanks would be an option that could be explored. Did you talk to them at all, like, why, it was not on the alternative site analysis? I understand that Mr. Maxson heard about it from a board member, that this might be an option, and I've heard it from people in town, why don't they put it up in, by the water tanks? So.
I've already explained why the water tank.
No, I asked, did you speak to them at all? Did you take this up at all with AT&amp;T?
The only, I've never talked to AT&amp;T personally, no.
AT&amp;T is representative here?
No.
Okay. Well.
If we did, it would have to be.
Whatever we talked about, yeah.
At the suggestion of our consultant here, who said that that tower would light up the top of the town, as well as underserved areas around it, it was a site that is.
Sure, real quick, I'm not going to, the water tank issue is over, I'm just going to say to you again one more time, that height of that tower, of an antenna on that tank would be, would be less height than the 20 Glenwood Road tower that they rejected and didn't have coverage on the other side of town.
But you.
And I told you early in this meeting that we didn't, personally, my opinion is, we don't want to have multiple towers. We want to have the single co-located tower. So that's my, that's.
Could we ask David Maxson, because he was the one who took a look at the.
Chris, may I? Chris, may I again?
No, this is. No, this issue is, it's over. I don't want to discuss it, your next point, please.
Okay, one last statement is, I think that the board has, is justified, if it so choose to deny this application due to insufficient alternative site evidence. The applicant basically just out of hand said, for the Haynes Farm, for instance, not acceptable. There was no evidence beyond that it didn't satisfy their coverage needs.
The consultant agreed with him, sir.
I'm not sure about that, did he?
He reviewed those areas, and he agreed with all their maps and their...
Could we ask him, because I thought he said it was... Hello?
Can we move along here, what do you want to add?
It's not part of tonight's meeting.
No. Sir, what's your next point, Mr. Gold?
Well, that was pretty much it. I think that telecommunications act allows the zoning board to decide locations.
Yeah, we're, we're, thank you. This is information discussed tonight, sir, please stand.
Okay.
Okay. Chairman of the back.
Jason Taylor, 21 Sharon Hill Road. First, I want to say, like Mr. LipTech said, it's a town bylaw, it's not who can see the thing by law. Second, he says that he can't waive the 6409 rights, I understand that, of course, but he can say, "You can't come on our tower if it doesn't work." So they could limit it to three, if it doesn't work above 20, four if it, above 120, four if it does. What you guys are proposing, like Mr. Maxson said, has been untested. This is pretty cut and dry, you can't go above 120 if you need two for four, or you can't have four if you need to go above 120. And finally, I'd like to say that as far as the petition goes, with 90% of the people signing the names on it, they didn't sign because of a lack of due diligence. What everybody's worried about, even though you guys aren't, is the school. We have to find other reasons because you guys aren't worried about it. That's not quack science. No serious person can say it's been disproven completely. It's not true. So people care about that, and I care about that, and that's an impact. And we're asking you to represent us, we're not asking you to choose for us. That's what you're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman of the back.
John Rukicki, 17 Proudly Lane. I thank the board for their due diligence in this upfront. The only comment I want to make is, your, is my understanding, your role is to look at the bylaws, look at the application, understand where the delta is, and whether you can make them meet somewhere in the middle or reject it based on our town bylaws. The board doesn't have a place in deciding whether the town should have one, three, seven, or 100 towers in this town. If individuals of this board would like to have the bylaws restated to limit that, that's something they can do in their own prerogative. But it's not a decision of this board of whether it's preferable for the town to have one tower, or two towers, or 10 towers. It's what is the application relative to the bylaws? The bylaws have no restrictions for the number of towers that can be put up. Bylaws could allow for 100 towers to be put in town.
It doesn't have any restrictions for quantity of towers, I agree with you, sir. But the one thing it does require, that any tower that is built maximizes co-location, that is a requirement of this bylaw.
Could you humor me and explain co-location?
Quantity of antennas on one tower at one location, John. So in other words, rather than building multiple towers all around with just AT&amp;T on one, Verizon on another, and nobody else, the purpose of this bylaw was to create co-location, it's in the bylaws, so that you can get as many antennas on one tower to minimize, obviously, the quantity of towers in town.
Right, but right now, the problem would be the same for any and all applicants, that if you put a tower, I won't say the water tower, I'll say that is, the lower end of Wheeler Road as an option, if four antennas go up there, four antennas are going to need to go up on a secondary tower somewhere else. There's no magic that one gets, and you're now creating this sparse array of multiple towers just for individual things. So that's my only comment relative to tonight's issue. The bylaws are, you know, you're trying to thread the needle of what the bylaws is, I would ask you to not go beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am in the back, along the wall there.
Carol Bonnight, Cherokee Hill Road. Would there be a light at the top of the Great Lightning Rod?
No, no, there'll be a lightning rod at the top of the tower, there's no lighting on the tower.
No light on the top, no...
No blinking light anywhere on the tower.
Okay. I would suggest that the board might want to reconsider waiving any special permit review five years, you could make it six years, you could make it seven years, but my concern would be, if you waive that, that's in perpetuity and that's grandfathered. And it doesn't give the town any space to revisit if something changes, whether it's something, I've heard a lot of maybe unseen, unknown, untested, so far, everything's all hunky-dory. I would just consider not waiving all that right, our first go-around with this tower. You know, if in five years, nothing is, you maybe extend it to 10 years, and, you know, if it gets up to be 20 years, you might consider it, so just for consideration.
It's a good point, will take it.
Just with the subdivision of the 12 acres, the 12.97, how many make yours, that's, I hear, that that will be easy enough to do with this property owner, but if that property is sold, just to make sure that there's language...
Yeah, it'll be part of the deed in perpetuity, yes, yeah.
Correct, yep.
As long as that tower is there, is the way I would want this written, that that property can, no trees can be cut down, you cannot subdivide that property. If he takes the tower down, he wants to do something with it, then it's all back for a game.
Great, and I just, you know, about the wear and tear on the road, that is something that has been talked about a lot on other roads, and just don't know how often, it's not maybe just a technician coming out every couple of times a year, I don't know how often the propane tanks need to be rebuilt, all of that stuff, so it's not just a technician after that first initial, so, just things that I've been thinking about. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I thought there was somebody else with their hand up here, but if not...
No, I was pointing, she had her hand up.
Okay, thank you, we'll get them. The gentleman in the back, you had your hand up?
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff you can go over. Obviously, you kind of wanted to focus on just what's going on. I think it's kind of unnecessary to say that the petition is inviable. We wanted to add 152 signatures tonight, we'd like maybe consent to do that, is for the record. I don't know if you want to...
You can submit those, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Send those to Mr. Murphy, please.
Yep, there was some discussion of reasons why you can't have a viewpoint with people that signed the petition. It seems like those arguments were like, oh, they don't live near or close by, so therefore they don't count, and I mean, so they're only allowed to stay in their home, they can't make decisions in town if they come to the center of town. I think it's very unthoughtful, you know, there's a lot of people that live in the town, we all run into each other, I think it's fair to say that people take the opinion seriously, we never asked them much more than saying whether this should be at 12 Phillips Road or not. You know, that's where we were at, you know, we know you can talk about a million things, but we asked them to sign over those conditions. Obviously, that goes to other topics of, oh, well, can we do this another way, yada, yada, yada. You know, part of the petition was the humans, you know, we felt it was a human study for the town on this topic. The board never really went out and found anybody that loved it, you know, we know you guys are trying to find a way to supply a system in town, but, I mean, you have obviously public hearings, but there was no survey on the website about whether or not people wanted it or not, you know, so I still want to hope that this counts in a way of describing how people felt about this whole situation. There, you know, since this is trying to limit how people speak a little bit tonight, waiver on monitoring compliance is just a really crazy way to say, don't keep an eye on us, don't watch us, we don't know what's going on, or we don't want you to know what's going on.
We'll be tested, sir, after the night, within 90 days of the installation?
Yeah, and even one year, they should supply you with data every year.
For the consultant, we're at five, less than 5% of the allowable total percentage, okay?
Yep.
And so, I think as a board we discussed that, rather than just blogging down with the town with bureaucratic processes, if there is an issue or another carrier comes on, we'll test again at that time. And if there's an issue raised for whatever reason, the applicant, the town will have the right to request that testing at any time for whatever reason.
Yeah, and maybe they'll...
But there has to be a reason for it.
Maybe they'll decide...
Put people through processes for, just for the fun of it, when you're at 5%, that's all it is.
Yeah, here's a great...
Just keep going.
I understand, I understand. You know, two, one tower can admit 5%, but can two towers next to each other both admit 5% and then have a combined total any higher than 5%? Obviously, it's totally possible, I'm not saying there's two towers...
It'll be tested, the next, are you talking antenna or tower? The next, the second antenna will be tested, sir.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We're not talking about another tower.
No, I know, I know, I know, it's just hypotheticals, that people can be exposed to more than 5%, yada, yada, I know it's not important. You know, there's definitely going to be fluctuations in these things, they're accepting or rejecting cell phones, so obviously, whatever number they tell you doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be the same thing. But I would like to just make sure that we try to comply or allow for compliance in that regard. Fall zone stuff, because we did talk about it, I have an interesting story about the Irish Lane Tower from someone who signed the petition. They live next to, they are a neighbor to the Irish Lane Tower, owned by AT&amp;T. An interesting story, and it has to do with fall zone and limits to fall zones, they came home or discovered two large sheets of sheet metal lodged in the ground in their backyard. And they kind of had no idea where they'd come from, how do you get two large pieces of metal lodged in the ground in your backyard? And so, come to find out, they learned their neighbor has a tower on the property. In confidence, that person works in the town, and they consider this extremely dangerous situation. If anyone's in the yard and this happens, it's, to them, they consider 100% fatal. You're going to have, and so how did they come off? How did it land in their yard? How did it go far enough outside of what's called the fall zone, which is mainly what we've been talking about, just all the toll falls down. Well, there's even greater issues with that. If there's four carriers, four panels, you've got 16 possible pieces of metal that could come loose. I want to kind of get this back to, the center of town is very windy, you've got extreme winds appear. These things will flex, you know, we can say the pole structure is, it's just going to sway and it'll stand there, but these panels will flex, bolts will unwind, and in this situation, it happened, where in town, we had a tower pull apart, pieces landed fast enough to embed themselves in the ground. You can't, this person did lodge a complaint with AT&amp;T over it, it is on record. The other thing is, it's possible that this can be a scenario where anyone can get hurt if they're not looking right up in the air. It's a high public area, you've got schools, you've got recreation, people walk, baseball fields, it's just one of those other, can we relocate, can we talk, if there's any talk about location, that's a danger, has to do with fall zone. Even these items went outside of what gives us, so there's high potential, and it's a little scary for, to hear that story, and then potentially for that to happen in town, so, you know, that's a lot of that, and we just hope, you know, it obviously seems like things getting built, so, you know, I don't know what else to say, and if I can, I'll just submit the signatures.
Please do, thank you. Thank you.
Mike Sullivan has had to stand up for a bit.
Yeah, okay, Mike Sullivan, online, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. First of all, I'd like to, Mike Sullivan, I live in Rutland. I'd just like to, first of all, thank you for all your efforts, and I understand the difficulty of a decision such as this. It's not easy, and someone's going to go home happy, and someone's going to go home mad, we all know that. But my, I know I discussed this once at an earlier meeting, you know, I heard someone on the board say in this discussion tonight, that the purpose of the existing bylaw was, and whatever the comment was, but I was part of writing that bylaw when it was written, and I can tell you beyond a reasonable doubt, in fact, with positivity, the reason that bylaw was written was because of the 600-foot tower that's in our town now. And the sole reason it was written, or the initiation of it, was the fact that people didn't like the looks of the high tower. So when the bylaw was worked on, we spent, I think, the better part of a year with public hearings and charrettes and comparing other zoning regulations, and came up with the bylaw that we have. And again, the reason that it was written was because people didn't want to see towers sticking above their rural community, that if you were to read any of the surveys that the town has put out in the last 20 years, it's the first thing every single person says when they fill that bylaw out, the reason they want to be in Rutland is because of its rural character. So I'm sitting here now, and I also have heard members of this committee say that if people are so against it, why are they not here at the meetings expressing it? And, you know, that's maybe a fair statement, but what I would say to that is, over, well over 225 people attended the town meeting and unanimously approved this bylaw, almost unheard of in a zoning bylaw. Secondly, we now have, and I don't know what the number is, I'm just going to throw a number out, 350 people that have signed a petition saying they don't want this regulation, this variance to be granted. So here we are with the first application of a cell tower on an existing zoning regulation approved by that many people, and I don't think there's any doubt that it appears as though the board is leaning towards approving that. And, you know, as someone who volunteered, dedicated a lot of time to writing the bylaw at the request of the townspeople, that's pretty disconcerting and disheartening. And, you know, you folks know the amount of time and effort you put into what you do, and to have that kind of time and effort on the first application, just get kicked to the curb, it just doesn't make sense to me. So what I would, I would like to ask, before you vote, I would like to ask each member if they would be willing to discuss or at least comment on the unanimous vote of the town meeting and the 350 people who have signed a petition, what the relevance, if any, there is to their decision. Because again, it's, it's just incomprehensible to me that that can be ignored. It's the basis for the, for, your, I believe, what your responsibility is, is to the health, safety, and welfare of the town of Rutland inhabitants, not to a private enterprise, not to a singular landowner, and I mean no disrespect to the landowner, I don't know the person, but what is troubling to me is that one person and one, one private enterprise is going to be potentially rewarded with something at the expense of the majority of people who have responded to this, these hearings. And lastly, I would ask, and again, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I would like to hear their comments before you vote, but lastly, I have not heard one single person come to any of these meetings, come to a Zoom, I have not heard one person, other than the applicant themselves, say... applicant themselves, say that we need this. I haven't heard anybody say, gee, my reception stinks, please do this, you know, I can't get data, please do this, you absolutely need it. I have, you know, I'm trying to run the business out of my house and I can't do it. Not one person. Yet you have 350 signatures, thereabouts, I don't know what the real number is.
All right, Mike, thank you. Anything else? Any other points, Mike?
I guess I'm done.
I'm just asking if you have any other points to say, we've heard those, those points. I'm just going to say this, I know you might, I'm going to give you a little bit of respect here. All bylaws, and I did discuss this, and you were not at the meeting, but I'll do it again for you. All bylaws are approved at town meeting. And the state has a law that requires every town to have a zoning board, so anybody within those towns has the right to appeal and show a hardship. That is the state law, okay? So regardless of how a town bylaw is made and what passions put behind it, they all have that. In regards to the variances, there's three variances here. If you go by the bylaw, no tower in this town would be greater than 45 feet high. How many towers do you think we'd have in this town if they could only be maximum 45 feet high? Think about that. Because the bylaws state, if we did not give a variance, there's three, there's three variances here. There's one for the zoning, which is 35 feet tall, there's no area that's greater than 35 feet zoning in this town. The highest structure, or 10 feet over the tree limit. The tree limit really becomes useless at that point, because the minimum required is 10 feet over the 35-foot-high-tall building. That's the zoning height you can go, 35 feet. So that means no tower would be greater than 45 feet. How many towers do you, excuse me, sir, I'm speaking, please, thank you. How many towers do you think would end up at that point? There'd be, there'd be a lot of them, okay, in a lot of locations. So again, I'm just telling them, I respect them, Mike, that's where I'm coming from, and that's why, again, at 120 feet, this is still the lowest, shortest tower within Barry Spencer and that area, okay?
Okay, I appreciate your comments, all I'm going to say is, I don't care about Barry, I don't care about Spencer, all I care about is Rutland, and again, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I made my points.
Ms. Street, this is the last time I'm going to let you speak tonight. Go ahead.
Sorry?
No, Ms. Street is up next, thank you, Mike.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood. Thank you.
We're going to wrap up the public comment here. Go ahead, Ms. Street, one last time.
I will start with two brief comments, and then I have another comment, since this is the last time I can speak. My comment is that I'm in a butter. I've been on my property 13 years. In brief, nine to 10 years, zero groundwater issues. Past two to three years, major groundwater issues. I'm very concerned about the amount of mature trees and loam that will be coming out of this abutting property. Second comment, I don't, I wonder by what means the board has decided that property devaluation is not an issue, with cell towers proximal to many residences. And then, thirdly, I'd like to say that we do know that the burden is on AT&amp;T to prove that 12 Phillips Road is the least intrusive location for this tower. I do think it would be to the benefit of the entire town for the town to suggest sites that might be least intrusive, because so far, what we've considered for least intrusive sites have been the alternative site list that was entirely created by AT&amp;T. I think it would be for the benefit of the town, for the town to consider some alternative sites. The, in regards to the Haynes Farm, I believe it's 20 Glenwood Road, has AT&amp;T submitted sufficient technical data to show that that would, erecting a tower there would provide less coverage than erecting this tower next to schools and...
Yeah, that was discussed in a prior meeting, and it was reviewed by David Maxon, yes. That information has been submitted with all the other locations, thank you.
Thank you, and that was sufficient technical data submitted by AT&amp;T, going that 20 Glenwood Road provides less coverage, correct?
Mr. Maxon agreed to all their, all their documentation and all their formulas and all their calculations, yes. I'm certainly not one to, that's why we brought him in to review that data, and he had agreed that all that data was correct, yes, we discussed that.
Okay, so I want to say that I don't believe it's an apples-to-apples comparison to say that a tower on the Haynes Farm on Glenwood Road would provide the same amount of coverage as a tower on the Water Tank property. I have not looked at a topographical map tonight, but it is my understanding that the Water Tank property is the highest point in town and therefore would be higher than the Haynes Farm. And we also have only discussed antennas mounted on the water tanks. Now, if we put a tower on the Water Tank property, deep into that, there's 135 contiguous town-owned acres up there, where the tower could go further away from homes, there's no schools nearby, there's no center of town nearby, there's multiple access points, and there's an existing access road already, the tower could go deep into the property there, be higher than at any point in town, and we don't know that that wouldn't provide more, or the same amount of coverage as this tower that's suggested at 12 Phillips Road. And if you consider that it would be in a far preferable location to the residents of town, maybe that makes it a better tower, even if it was somewhat technically subpar to the one at 12 Phillips. But again, we don't know that it would be subpar to the one at 12 Phillips. We haven't done an apples-to-apples comparison there. But I would like to ask Mr., through the chair, Mr. Maxon, please, did you see that sufficient technical data was provided on the Haynes Farm property, showing that it was not a least intrusive site in 12 Phillips Road?
Ma'am, we have covered this. Dave, do you want to discuss this?
That's a yes or no answer, real quick.
Go ahead, Dave.
Dave, you're on mute.
Dave, I think you're on mute.
Thank you, helped myself, yes. I do comments, but yes, through the chair, I don't intend to submit cross-examination. Let me just talk about that for a second. What I said was that the bylaw tells us that there is a preference for the use of existing structures. The existing structures of the water tanks were raised as a possibility at previous meeting, and I said, that's great, judging from their location, they might, and the height, they might illuminate the town from one side, and that could change the way the network would be built out over time throughout town. And one interpretation of that might be that there might be another tower on the other side of the center of town sometime in the future. It would just, to me, it would just change the dynamics. But the important factor here is that I indicated that I did not see any coverage analysis of that potential alternative, and that the board could ask for cover and genalogies of that potential alternative, rather than us making inferences from other alternatives that the applicant has dismissed for coverage and has not provided coverage and analysis for. But, another board member made a very important point, and this could be what is weighing in the direction that the board is leaning, and that is that this property has to go through town meeting to be authorized for use, which is a long timeframe, elite time. And in many cases, I have seen towns get into hot water considering something's available when it's not readily available. So, I think the combination of the fact that it's, it's not a, it's not like the water tower's right there on the same hill, and more importantly, that it's not immediately readily available, that the board may be leaning, because of the Federal Telecommunications Act, in the direction of only those alternatives that are front and center and have some likelihood of being consummated in a short period of time. It's a difficult position that the board finds itself in, but I think that's the, from me, from my perspective, that's, that's what's, what's happening here.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more comment, please. I would just say, then, that's why we need to consult legal counsel so that we could navigate this lengthy process if we wanted to consider the town water tank property, again, not necessarily antennas on the tanks, but a tower on the property, if that was going to be a long process, legal counsel, somebody versing the telecommunications law could help us through that process. And secondly, why do, why does the town care about how long this will take? AT&amp;T came to us with this request to put a tower in town. The town did not go to AT&amp;T looking for this, so why does it matter to the residents of Rutland how long this takes? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, can I, not being asked that question directly, I'd be happy to answer it.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, and it has to do with when these things go into federal court, when they're denied. And just a quick aside, my first experience as an expert witness on behalf of a town in federal court was a case in Lincoln, Massachusetts, about 20 years ago, and it was Copelman and Page that was front and center on it. They do have people who know telecom law, and if you need to use town counsel, they can find someone in-house who has the knowledge and experience, I've met them. Now, a quick aside, so, what we've, what we've got is a situation where one of the questions that comes before the court is, well, is that alternative available? And then the question is, well, how much time between the time you pull the trigger on the denial and you go to the alternative site is appropriate for something to be considered available? And yes, I'm not an attorney, but I've been in a lot of cases, so, these are the kinds of questions that come up when you're looking at alternatives, because you're not just looking at them under the bylaw, you're looking at them as a way of defending yourself if you're inclined to deny an application. And so that's the question here, and the opinions that I've heard from, from the board at this point are that that's, that's a long haul to get to town meeting approval of using that property, if in fact it is viable from a coverage perspective. And it's also a degree of uncertainty that town meeting would approve the use of that property, either for a tower or for a water tank mount. So, again, it's, there is a timing factor in this, and I think that is, that is an important consideration.
Thank you. Ma'am, in the white shirt.
Tracy Wheeler, I live at 30 Maple Avenue. My question is about camouflage, I know we were, we, I think most people talked about the sort of fake trees being ridiculous, but wasn't there something in one of our meetings about the tower being painted a certain color, or...
That is one form of camouflage, yes, we could do that, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to bring that up, because I think you, when you were going through your list there, you sort of skipped over camouflage.
Well, we talked about it, the board talked about it, and we didn't feel we really needed camouflage, because it's ugly enough, but certainly take any feedback. Are you saying you would like it, camouflage? Ain't you?
I'm just bringing that up because I think that it was, I can't remember what color it was, but somebody, I think it might have been Mr. Maxon brought it up in another meeting about painting it brown or black or something like that, that would camouflage.
It looks like a gray, national gray tower. Correct attorney, it's a gray, gray tower?
It's galvanized steel at this point.
Yeah, galvanized, so that gray, galvanized color.
Yeah, we feel that wherever it is in the woods, that camouflage is not necessary, but we're also unable to paint it in dark brown, black. I do remember Mr. Maxon mentioning that, we're not opposed to that.
You all set, ma'am? That's it? Okay, yeah, sir and richer.
Hi, Mullin Sawyer, Pequot Trail in Rutland. I, the second thing that people who live in Rutland would tell you about Rutland is it's a great place to live, it's a beautiful community to look at and be a part of, and it's a great place to raise your kids. And I've had the luxury of having kids in the school system in Rutland for 30 years, end to end, as part of the Catholic, you know, birth control kind of thing. But one thing I'm going to suggest to you, that's a little bit out of the zoning board of appeals perspective and a normal working day, but maybe not so much anymore, is to consider the impacts of health equity in your subject matter. Health equity changes people's outcomes and health and well-being and their expectancy in life. You could be 10, 20 years shorter, depending upon where you live and proximity to things like a cell phone tower. Unanimously, folks in town care about their kids and their well-being, everybody on both sides of the panel. And please don't forget that one of the judgments that you want to make on this project is the health and well-being of our children for the entirety of the life of this transmitting terminal. And the reason you're testing is because you're creating something that you expect will act a certain way, within certain parameters, but you're not sure, because it's not here yet. And even in all the legal requirements of permitting, making sure the testing is right, that it's exactly right, so if you look at it from a health equity perspective of our children, you may not have done the best job in looking at this project and how you would get out of it, how you would remediate, how you would take your authority and your role in our community and use it today to improve the health of our children from this day and every day forward. And none of us can say what those real health impacts are going to be. I know in my property, I can't use my freaking cellphone, so I'm like, don't bring me to that meeting, I want the coverage on that side of town, but I don't want it at the expense of our children's health in any way, shape, or form. And to close this, the people in Flint, Michigan, were doing the right thing to save money in their town, and now the health of their children is irreversible. We're not there yet, but this project will have the biggest health impact that we've ever seen, and we don't know the extent of what it really is. So please, be our eyes and our ears and our conscience, you have our children's health and well-being in your hands in this project, and it matters to us a great deal. And we're very grateful for your leadership and your dedication in getting to the best possible fit for our community.
Thank you. This gentleman right next to you, and then I'll get to the chairman.
Just once again chiming in, Justin Mellon, 35 Vista Circle. I just want to share my personal experience of this. I've only had a day, but I was one of the people going out collecting opinions. And it started off as an opinion, I was only able to talk to people for four hours because I work in New Hampshire, but it was important enough, because I graduated from Naqog and Central Tree, it was important enough to me that for my children, I would want to act and get an opinion of the town. And of the 30 people that I pulled together, I had to throw eight away, because they're not from our town, and of the rest, everybody unanimously didn't want the tower. And that's just, well, yes, specifically there, specifically there. And that's just of a completely, just one person going out of business to take a survey.
Carol.
Carol Benoit, Turkey Hill. Something that you said, Mr. Chair, made me go to the website to look and see, sometimes when things have gone on for a long time, sometimes we lose sight of what the charge was. And the charge of the board is, let me ask the question in reference to what I read, just read the charges. Who is or are the aggrieved individuals in this, and how are they aggrieved? And that's from the website about what this Board of Appeals is. So, that might help people, you referenced something to do with that, which, like I said, is why I went to the website just now to look.
Thank you. All right, so, this time, yes, okay.
Just something quick, Karen Greenwood, 7 Breezy Lane, which I'm in a butter, and a lifelong resident of Rutland, and I've seen a lot of things happen in this town. Anybody else here? No, anybody else has been here as long as I have? You have, okay? So there's been a lot of changes, and we have town meetings and boards and petitions, all are for some reason. Now, I know the petitions, I don't know if Tamika, how many she had already that's been passed in, plus Keith's got one, and I don't know if you've got one, we must be up to four, 500 people. People that are opposed to this, so it's similar to, well, not similar, it's different, you're the zoning board, but 500 people are saying they're against it, just like the 200-something at the town meeting, and they initiated the bylaw. So I'm just saying, I, you know, sent my letter in and... So I'm just saying, I, you know, sent my letter in, and my sister Lynn and I both have been here all our lives, and we really want this to turn out, you know, in a way that the majority is speaking on. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Liptick, did you have some, one more thing to say?
Yes, I wanted to just address something you, the chairman, made. The CBA does have an important position. Once a bylaw is passed, any citizen, as you say, can come forward if they have a hardship. First of all, the citizen here is being represented by this cellphone company. But they've created a hardship. The hardship did not exist. They chose this location. They chose this application. They have no hardship. And again, I'm not a lawyer, but my understanding is you cannot create a hardship. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the blue shirt, you have one more thing?
Keith, 12 Maple Lab. So you've mentioned you kind of don't want 11 towers in town. So you're trying to say that this is the last tower that'll ever be built in town. Is that what you're trying to tell us?
That's not what I said.
I know, but interpretation, you don't want it to go to 11.
Quantity of towers is all I was saying, sir.
Yeah, yeah. No, I just, in terms of, like, it could be anywhere. I know, obviously, you have an applicant that has a certain parcel, a certain area, but, you know, if there's gonna be two towers, or if you're gonna continue getting these applications, because people will like what they see, you know, people are gonna try to get more, and these companies will apply again and again, you know. How are you really going to limit what's going on in town in this way? Even if you want just one tower to have all these, to at least satisfy co-location, you know, it just doesn't mean that this is gonna ever stop, you know. Just a way to bring up something at the last minute.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, all right, so at this time, just want to ask the board, you guys in favor of just closing the public discussion? Paul and Rick, you guys okay with closing the public discussion at this time?
Yes, I'll make a motion, Chris.
Okay. I'll second. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on closing the public discussion for this hearing at this time?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Let's take a roll call vote. All in favor to close the public discussion of this hearing at this time? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Paul?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so, hearing any nays? Hearing none and hearing five? Approvals, the motion carries unanimously. At this time, the public discussion is closed for this hearing. Okay, so, it's quarter after eight. I don't, I feel like we have to just have one more to wrap this up and get it to a vote. And then at that time, do we wanna, right now, I'm just feeling like we should kind of just maybe draft up some order conditions and some things. Try to work that language through, you know, potentially. Maybe the lawyers can draft up some of the legal stuff, or let's talk about how we want to do that and try to get these things to a point where we can bring it to the next meeting and.
Can we ask Attorney Souza to draft order of conditions based on what we've discussed?
For our review?
Yeah.
Attorney Souza, would you be willing to draft those order of conditions that we talked about, or and present, and send that to us?
The conditions themselves that you listed?
Yeah.
I can, including the, I can draft some proposed conditions based upon your comments.
Yep.
And we'll go off of that.
We'll go off, we can work off of that and bring it back. That'll be the, and basically, that's just gonna be the rough draft to start working from attorney. That we'll discuss and, you know, do we, what do you guys feel? You want to keep going here and try to hash through this tonight and vote on this tonight? I'm just concerned about voting on it tonight, but not having all these order conditions complete. So that we have a time limit.
If I may, so on the variance, if we choose to continue tonight and not vote on the variance, we do need to extend the final action deadline. With that being said, the variance is separate from the special permit, so you have the option to vote on the variance and then still continue with the special permit. If you close the public hearing, you have 90 days from the close of the public hearing to issue a decision on the special permit.
Okay.
So it's up to you how you want to proceed.
And our order of conditions will be on the?
That would be for the special permit, not for the variance.
That sounds like a plan.
All right, so we do the variance tonight, and then we just do, we'll do the order of conditions on the special permit at the next meeting. And we still have to request a time extension on the variances anyways.
No, if you vote on it tonight, then it's closed.
It's closed, those are closed.
Then it's just the special permit, and you have 90 days from the date you close the hearing to issue the decision on that.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
So we talked about going to federal court. What causes it to go to federal court? We deny this variance, special permit?
If we denied it and they appealed it? Or if, if they can also, once we, if we approve it, somebody can appeal it. And then it would go to federal court.
So, but what's the chances of them winning in federal court? Put that tower right there with no conditions?
I don't know. I don't, I mean, I don't.
Right now, we have control. We have a lot more control, is what I'm saying.
We have a lot of control.
If they're gonna put that tower there no matter what, what, you know, and we don't have any say at that point. Right? That's what I'm trying to understand with the public hearing as well. If we don't do something now and try to control what they're gonna try to put there, then they can do whatever they want, is what you're saying. Is that what you're saying?
That's fuzzy logic there.
Chris, I think, I think Brett is trying to speak.
Yeah, Rick, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Chris, there's a fairly strong presumption under the Federal Telecommunications Act, you know, in favor of these towers, but if the, if the board has reasonable grounds, just from my own experience in federal court, the federal judges tend to want to give deference to the town's decision, to the board's decision. You know, none of us can sit here tonight and predict what's gonna happen.
No.
But I'm familiar with the federal judge in Wester District Court, and you know, he would give a lot of deference to our decision if we decided to deny this.
Okay. All right. Well, what do you guys think? Do you want to?
I'd like to vote on the variances tonight.
Oh, is that the feeling of the board?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's my feeling, Chris. I think, I think we should, we should vote on the variance. If you feel like we're up to it, if you feel strongly that we need to sit on this and, you know, let it sink, let tonight's meeting sink in, I'd be in favor of that, too. We would, we would just have to do, as Tamika said, do an extension of the time.
Yeah, I'm fine with doing the variances tonight. I don't have an issue with that. The only other point I would like to bring up, Ms. Benoit did bring up a good point on the allowing the permit, not to just go on for perpetuity. So perhaps a 10-year limit would be acceptable. So that if anyone gets a riot over there after, you know, this thing's, the four carries are on there in a few years, that we've got some type of way to rein these guys in a little bit. And I think that's an excellent point brought up, and certainly from her perspective, as a slut woman in town, that it makes good sense to, you know, give the town a little bit of leverage going forward. What's that?
That's, that's special permit, so that's aside from the variance.
Correct. That would just be something we'd put in the order of conditions in the waiver. We'd just readjust that waiver to that. So I just wanted to say that outside of what, and I put, I added that to my list of conditions, so just so you guys know. But I do, that's one thing I just did want to, from the public comment, I just did want to address, because originally I was like, let that thing go, but I think that's a good point, so.
So Chris, if I may, I think we should, if you're gonna vote on the variance, we should close the public hearing for the variance. And then continue the hearing for the special permit.
And we can always open the public hearing on that special permit if we need be.
Right, so the hearing for the special permit will still be considered open. We're gonna continue it. With respect to the variance, if you vote on it tonight, you close that public hearing. There are going to be no further comments on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
So we already closed public hearings. So what do we, what should we do now?
You guys informed, you closed up the public discussion, but you have not closed the hearing.
Oh, I misunderstood.
Right, so you would want, yeah, close the hearing for the variance. You can vote on it, and then continue the special permit.
Okay, so there's three variances, and I believe we need to vote on all three of these. The first variance.
Wait, you gotta close the hearing first.
Okay, all right. Well, we can discuss this, all right?
Oh, yes, sure, absolutely.
So before we, before we vote on anything, I just want the board members to understand, be clear. There are three variances that are in this application. The first variance is the facility shall not exceed the height limits by more than 10 feet in the zoning district, okay? Which is 35 feet, so that's a max 45 feet. The second variance is it can, may not, shall not project higher than 10 feet above the average tree canopy. And the third one is higher than 10 feet above the tallest building within 300 feet. Okay, so those are the three variances we have to vote on, and I assume we gotta do those individually, correct? Tamika? Make a motion for each one? Probably the best thing to do, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So at this time, we'd have to close the hearing on the three variances. And so, do we have a motion from the board to close the hearing for the variances for the cell tower at 12 Phillips Road?
I'll make the motion.
All right, do we have it seconded?
Second.
Second by Jake, first made by Paul, second by Jake. Any discussion on closing this hearing? For the variances for 12 Phillips Road for the cell tower?
No.
No? Rick, none? Paul, none?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Let's take a vote at this time to close the FOIC hearing for the variances for the application of special, for the application at 12 Phillips Road for the cell tower. All in favor? Aye? Aye? Any nays? Hearing none? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so at this time, we would need a motion to vote.
So what you would do is you would make a motion to grant the variance for whatever specific one it is. And then board members are either gonna vote yea or nay.
So I think at this time, we're gonna, the first variance will be, and again, if you want to follow on page five in his application, it would be a variance to project higher than 10 feet above the tallest building within 300 feet of distance of the tower. Do we want to limit? We don't, I don't know that we want to just say it can be higher. We should say it can be only so high possibly, or?
All right, Chris, I think I can do that. Like, say, so the motion I'm gonna make is that we grant a variance for 120-foot tower that 120-foot tower that will be project above the tree line, but be camouflaged by the tree line whose height.
But we're not talking about the tree line right now, Paul. We're talking just about the tallest building.
Okay, so the same wording, just instead of tree line called.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Yes, I can.
To grant the variance for 120-foot tower so that it is taller than the tallest building, that it's above 10 feet taller than the tallest building within 300 feet. Do we have a motion for that?
Paul made the motion.
Paul made the motion.
I'll second it.
Jake seconded. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing none, and when we vote on these guys, please just say your name, okay? Say yea or nay in your name, please. I just want to make sure we hear that clearly. This is not just a meeting minutes or something, okay? All right, so, at this time, hearing no. Rick, did you want to discuss something?
Yeah, yeah, we're, no discussion, but just administratively, do you want to just individually poll, poll the members? So it's clear where we vote. I mean, it's up to you.
Yeah, sure, yeah. All right, so, at this time, we're gonna, so hearing no discussion, we'll vote. Paul, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rick, how do you vote?
Aye, yes.
Jacob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Chris Sennical is aye, yes. The motion carries unanimously. The variance is granted to 120 feet. Okay. The second variance will be to extend, to install 100, to allow 120-foot tower that will be allowed to extend 10 feet higher than the zoning district allows at 12 Phillips Road for the cell tower. Do I have a motion?
Chris, I think the way you stated that may be faulty.
Go ahead.
What's the max, so, right now, it's, what is the max, what is the zoning bylaw state?
35 feet.
Max for the tower?
Yep.
Right?
The zoning district is, the tallest structure is 35 feet in that zoning district.
Okay, so I think they, we have space that we want to issue a variance allowing them to build a 120-foot tower which exceeds the 35-foot limit, exceeding the 35.
Which exceeds the 10-foot limit above the 35 feet, yes.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta put the.
Because the bylaw allows them 10 feet above the 35 feet.
Exceeding the 10.
Yeah, exceeding. To exceed the 10-foot allowance above the variance. Okay, do I have a motion for that? Paul, is that you making that motion then?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jacob seconded. Do we have any discussion to allow the 120-foot tower to exceed the 10-foot above the 35-foot zoning district maximum height for 12 Phillips Road cell tower? Any discussion?
No.
Paul, none? Rick, Paul, I mean, Paul, nothing?
Paul's good.
Okay, hearing no discussion at this time. Let's take a vote. Paul, how do you vote for that?
Yes.
Rick, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Jacob?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Chris Sennical, yes. Hearing all five members vote unanimously, the motion carries. Okay, and finally, for the third variance, this would be to construct a 120-foot tower above the tree canopy line that is 10, the bylaw states, all right, so I'll sit back up here, to allow the applicant to install 120-foot tower above the 10-foot above the tree line standard. Canopy tree line standard. Do I have a motion?
Well, Chris, wait a minute, this is the one that needs to have the the camouflage wording in there slightly.
What do you mean?
Remember, we talked about the ordinance, the law there that said that they, you know, they can automatically go up 20 feet unless it's.
That's gonna be part of the special permit.
And the conditions.
And the order of conditions.
Okay.
So we, okay. And that also ties to breaking their special permit, so if they have to go back for their special permit, the town will kind of have them roped in on that. Okay?
Okay.
So I like keeping it in the special permit, personally.
Yep, okay. All right, as long as we, as long as we're maintaining that control.
Yeah, okay, so, there's a motion on the floor. Do I have a, well, I stated that, do I have, do I have someone making that motion for that? Variance?
I'll make the motion.
Jacob, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Bob has seconded. Okay, do I hear any discussion regarding granting one, a variance for 120-foot tower that will be 10 feet above the tree line, tree canopy height?
No.
No, hearing no, Rick, Rick or Paul, any discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing no discussion. At this time, we'll take a vote. Paul, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Chris Sennical, yes. Having all five members vote unanimously, the motion's carried unanimously. And those are the three variances for this, for this hearing. So that wraps that up. Okay, now we need to, just to continue this hearing for this, to finalize the special permit and the order of conditions. Attorney Souza, what available dates? What's the next timeframe everybody has? I know we're getting into a dicey timeframe here with, also Tamika, what is available?
So the 13th and the 27th are not available because of HPDD.
Okay, the 13th and 27th.
Unless we opt to go through Thursday night.
So how about next week, the 6th?
We can, yup, the 6th is an option.
Is everybody available one week from now, the 6th?
Hey, Chris, just a point of order. Could you read the?
Could you read the, you know, the, all right, so we approved the variance, you just inform the petitioner and the public as to what the options are, you know, the, the, the waiting period and the right to appeal?
So we have 14 days to write the decision, have it clocked in with the town clerk, and then there is a 20 calendar day appeal period during which somebody can appeal the decision with the town clerk's office.
Okay, all right.
And that's just for the variance.
Okay, all right.
I'll look, is now aware of that, good.
And that would be superior court of the land court by 48.
Okay. So who will write, Tamika, will you write these variances?
Um...
Or is, do Jacob or Rick, do you want to do these variances, Rick?
Uh, yeah, I'll do it.
Do you mind doing those?
No, I'll do it.
For your swan song?
Yeah.
Kind of farewell.
Yeah, give us your farewell memo.
So we are...
Memoirs from Rick Sarette.
We are doing the 6th.
I, I'd like to do the 6th because I have a hearing on, for another board on the 13th and the 27th, and I'm on vacation the week of the 20th, so I wouldn't be able to be till August if we don't do the 6th, so...
The 6th works for me, Mr. Chairman.
6th works for you. Paul, does the 6th work for you and Rick for you as well?
Yes, it does, it does, Chris.
Cut into my blues cards, it's on the beach, but we'll have to deal with it. I wish I lived your lifestyle. David Maxon, will you be available a week from tonight?
Uh, in Tennessee, uh, yeah, I can probably make it. Let me check.
Okay, all right.
I just need a motion to continue.
All right, so do we have a motion to continue?
I'll make the motion to continue the hearing with regard to the special permit.
Okay, to July 6th, 6:00 P.M. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Bob, Bob seconded it? I was getting worried, Dan. All right, so Bob is seconding the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Paul?
Aye.
Rick, you said yes? Okay, yeah, Jacob?
Aye. Was that for discussion or was...
No, well, to continue the special permit to July 6th at 6:00 P.M.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
All right, Jacob, yes. Bob?
Yes.
Chris Senkel, yes. All right, hearing all five members unanimously, the motion carries unanimous. This hearing will be continued until July 6th at 6:00 P.M., right back here in the lovely library of Rutland, Massachusetts. I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. David, I didn't get a chance to thank you the last meeting, but I did want to give you a shout out, that your help has been tremendous. I know personally, having your experience and what you know about RF and just going through this procedure in general, all the advice you've given us has been tremendous and just kind of reaffirms or, and certainly guides us in a good way, and I'm very grateful that you're here helping us out. So I just wanted to thank you for that personally and professionally. You've done a heck of a job. Knock, knock, knock up, great job.